Numbers in the community recently has played a major factor in influencing us to temporarily return to social distancing measures at city council meetings. This decision was made late last week and because the information had gone out regarding all the public hearings we got tonight, it was said the location would be the City Hall. We decided not to change to a different venue. We're committed to doing all we can to keep our citizens as well as city staff and council members safe while at City Hall. Standard safety protocols will be observed by all attending city council meetings and while wearing a mask at council meetings voluntarily. We highly encourage it as a preventative measure, and I apologize, I went out and want to go without my mask here, but we'll observe six-foot distancing and visitor seating being designated. Visitor overflow will be in the City Hall lobby or outside City Hall. Citizens are encouraged to view and hear city council meetings on Spectrum Channel 2 or by live streaming via the city's website, www.kurvilleTX.gov. And city council meetings are also recorded and recordings are posted on the city's website and Facebook pages. I'd like to ask you to stand at this time, and Councilmember Carl Clarkson will lead us in prayer and the pledge.
Dear God, we need your presence in our lives now more than ever. As we start a new year, help us release bitterness, frustrations, and other roadblocks that keep us from moving forward. If we find ourselves facing challenges that we couldn't have imagined in the past, open our hearts so that we may recognize those who are hurting, so that we can find ways to offer assistance and provide them comfort so their wounds can heal. As council members, please give us wisdom and discernment. Help us do what is best for our community as a whole and find ways to bring together rather than to divide our community. Reveal to us common ground that we can use to make positive changes. Help us remember that we're never going to please everyone as council members, but provide us strength that we will need to make the decisions that are right for the community as a whole, even when we're faced with daily pressures and adversity. As we enter a new year, we offer you things, for you're the one that makes all things new. I ask you and your blessings over our community, our nation, and the world. In your name we pray.
Amen.
... to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remember this, if anyone present wants to speak on an agenda item, they need to sign up and present a speaker request form to the city secretary in advance of the meeting of the item being read into the record by the city secretary. Speakers may also use Zoom for remote access. All instructions have been provided online in the agenda and have been widely publicized. When speakers are called, they're to come to the microphone and begin by stating their name and address for the record. Note that public comment periods are for council to set aside time to specifically hear from you, and questions that you might have will not be responded to until after public comments have been concluded. Thank you for observing this. Now, any announcements of community interest?
Thank you, Mayor. We don't have any announcements tonight, so I'm going to turn it over. Sometimes you guys do, and I didn't know if anybody... No announcements tonight. We're going to actually get on quickly to Chief Maloney's report, which I think is a big announcement report, and so... But sometimes you all have something, so check in and see if you had anything to...
I do. The Senior Services Advisory Committee of the city has put together the Senior Services Resource Guide. Now, I am not sure if this is yet available on the website. Do you know, Mr. Hoppe?
Yes, it is.
It is? It is available on the website. This is a very good, very good guide. They've done a good job on this, and I just compliment them for it.
We also have copies here at City Hall and at the library.
Oh, great. Okay, thank you. All right.
Put a lot of good work into that, so to the committee. They put a lot of good work into that.
Yeah, they did put a lot of good work into it. You know, we have over 200 citizens involved in committees, boards, commissions of the city, and they make a huge difference, as we just saw in their presentation regarding the Public Safety Committee. Chief Maloney, would you give us some work about our COVID situation?
I guess my presentation warms up through Paxton's tonight, so with the announcements, but I'll give the one regarding COVID-19 update for the city of Kerrville. Last one I presented was at city council in December, and since then, there are a few changes. So, as I mentioned before, in December and back in November, we monitor the active cases for the region, but DSHS, we feel, has been a little bit behind on the numbers, that they weren't matching up, and they are behind trying to do some of the reporting for that. So really, we've been watching the hospitalizations and working closely with Peterson Health for that. So currently, the hospitalizations that are out there, there's 21 reported yesterday from Peterson, and one, just as a record on there, one patient on November 18th is what we had. The last time we had in the 20s, 22, was on September 24th. So definitely saw a spike recently in the number of hospitalizations at Peterson, so that is concerning. The deaths are at 143 per the Department of State Health Service, with 7,173 recovered. The other concerning part that we're getting from Peterson is that the positivity rate is at 29% of what they are reporting. Today, just came out from KISD that there were 127 positive students through all their schools at the ISD, and yesterday, Peterson Health reported 142 new cases. So the numbers are absolutely up, and that is kind of what we're seeing when we talk about the surge.
And Chief, does that number include students and teachers?
So I believe that one does, correct. So we get the letters, but they post that one on their website is where they put the total for the KISD for each school. The hospitalizations and what we've been monitoring, so on there, you can see, so from the last spike that we had, that was right there at Labor Day. So the highest we had was at 44. See where we dropped down, and now we're tracking back up to 21. This is consistent with what we're seeing across the region in the Bear County and also the other regional hospitals outside Bear County for that. The Omicron variant, so I'll talk a little bit about that. So this one is, it's different than the past variants of the Alpha and the Delta that were impacted our community. So it's currently the dominant variant out there. So it is highly transmissible. So we're seeing that within the city. We're seeing that within the community, very different than the ones that we have managed in the past, even as the fire department. So we're watching that closely, and it's starting to impact us and also the city. So it appears to have milder symptoms. So there's still a lot of reports, there still don't have any new data in 2022 on that, but a lot of the last ones were milder symptoms, and we are seeing consistently that across the city that we're tracking and talking. However, the hospitalizations is at 21 for that, but the numbers are definitely higher. The peaked active cases, this is the concerning, is on January 18th. So that's next week, so, and it's going to be four times higher than the Delta is what they're anticipating, and that is, they have been on projections for the state of Texas. That's not Kerrville State of Texas, and you can see the surge. It's a very steep accelerated phase, so, and there's not a lot of plateau, and it will get into the decelerate just as fast for that. So it's going to be real steep, real quick over the next week with these active cases out there. The peak hospitalizations is February 10th. That's a month from now. So Peterson's at 21 today. Can't speak for Peterson on the 21, but that is a bit of a concern. The anticipation is that it's going to be 20% lower than a Delta. At Delta, when we looked at it, it was at 44 is where we were at. So across the board, and talk about Texas and in general, they're anticipating 40% lower than the Delta. Common symptoms, runny nose, stuffy nose, sore throat, fatigue, and headaches. For the hill country, that matches right up with everything else, the headaches, the cedar fever, the mold ties, think cedars down, one or the other, part of the problem. So it's two to three days we're seeing on the latent, and then it becomes transmissible. People that have these kind of symptoms, real quickly, it's difficult to identify those and differentiate those from regular allergies that you're having out there, me included. And that's coupled with some other challenges, so I'll talk about those in a second. Local updates per the DSHS website, so this has not moved much. This has stayed pretty consistent. Forty, 48.6% of eligible residents are fully vaccinated, five-plus, and then 65% are fully vaccinated, 66.3%. That hasn't moved at all. So the population, which was kind of interesting, there's about 50,000 in Kirk County that are eligible for the vaccine. 24,000 are fully vaccinated that received two doses at some point over the last year, but only 9,000 of those have received the booster, is what we're seeing. So a lower turnout for the booster than have received the fully vaccinated. What we're seeing with the Omicron, so now milder symptoms maybe due because you were vaccinated, but we are seeing people with this one that are vaccinated and are turning up positive for, on the Omicron variant, so, which is, we didn't see that before in the Delta.
Do we have the...
Vaccine, I'm sorry?
Sorry to interrupt. I was just asking, we have the number of fully vaccinated, the numbers that got the booster to get, I guess, the full vaccination, or is...
So two different ones. The fully vaccinated comes off the percentage, the 48.6% of the 50,000 eligible, so the booster is separate for that. This is reported from DSHS is where they're tracking that. So the fully vaccinated is two doses of the Moderna or the Pfizer, or one dose of the Johnson &amp; Johnson is what that is. The booster is an additional on that one. So 9,000 additional booster doses are one.
Okay, gotcha. Yep, thank you.
Vaccine availability, so we're seeing some of the challenges out there for the vaccines available. HEB, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, Peterson Urgent, and even the local DSHS office. So vaccine is available. We're seeing very easy to be able to get in, get the booster, so I got the booster last weekend, and there was plenty of availability throughout the day for that. Testing, this is some of the other challenges that we run across. So in two years at this, so now there's a national shortage on testing. So there's limited availability locally for these at-home tests that I've mentioned before. So they do have them in HEBs, Walmart, but they are coming in, when they come in, they're going out just as fast. I think this is one that people are buying more for the testing, and so they're not readily available. You can schedule with your local pharmacies, at Walgreens, Peterson Urgent Care, and CVS. So they take a couple of days to get information back. Some of them are shipping them out. The one that did change recently is that Peterson Health opened up testing at Peterson Medical Associates at 1331 Bandera Highway. You can schedule an appointment on PetersonHealth.com. They have so much availability during the day. It is a self-administered test. Basically, they will talk you through how to administer the test Monday through Friday, 7:30 to 4:00. They just opened up this last week due to high demand, so they were also seeing a surge at the Peterson Urgent Care and the ED, and so they're trying to relieve some of that pressure there. And there's still a line at the Peterson Urgent Care every morning when I drive by on my way to work. So that's about my report out.
Just a curiosity question. With the at-home tests, how long are they good for?
So the at-home, I'm sorry, I guess on the question...
The at-home tests. I mean, how long can you, if you pick them up at a pharmacy, how long can you keep them and they're still, and they'll still work? They're still good?
For the expiration date?
Yes.
I do not know offhand for those. I know initially when we were issued ours with Texas Department of Emergency Management, they were nine months, so...
Oh, really? That long?
I don't know on the current ones that are out there, but they are the Vionex, so they're probably somewhere near. But a lot of those, because of the national shortage, they're passing through the expiration date. They're saying they can also be extended another three, another six months beyond that, so...
Thank you.
So I find it with all of the things you talk about, the Omicron, being a little bit tricky as far as being an employer. So to ask the city, or what... We went and got the current guidelines from the hospital, which the guidelines we received said if you test positive, you go back to when you first had symptoms for five days, and then you can, if you're feeling fine, come and mask up for five days. Is that what the city's doing, or what protocols are you guys doing right now?
Yeah, we have adjusted our operational protocols to match up with CDC guidelines. And again, you know, we, per state law, we can't require masks. We certainly encourage them for those folks that do come back. You know, the biggest thing for us is making sure we're keeping employees healthy to begin with, and as then upon their return, we're keeping, you know, their fellow colleagues healthy as well, so...
So what exactly is the protocol then? 10 days or...
Yeah, it really varies, and again, you've got to, you know, it's really about symptoms and whether folks are demonstrating symptoms or not, but we have a whole flow chart that Chief...
Okay, so you have to kind of just go if this, then this, if this, then this.
Correct, that's right.
So we developed a flow chart to try to help, but all that kind of funnels through myself and Mrs. Meismer, so trying to look at, trying to ask the right questions for vaccine. So for the fully vaccinated, we're looking at less than six months or a booster within six months, and then that changes some of the factors, was it close contact? And basically, put them into a spreadsheet, and it'll show up the number of what that is. The challenge with that, and as an employer out there, is to differentiate when the symptom started, that it wasn't cedar, so that it did change on there, and with those symptoms...
It's very tricky right now. I'm sure a lot of businesses are...
Very low symptoms we're seeing, that was in the Delta and the Alpha, was the loss of taste and smell, very clear, correct. So some people are using that one and go, it was last week, last Thursday was, or Wednesday was terrible with cedar, so, for that one. So that's some of the challenges kind of...
Very tricky, yeah, it's just tricky right now, sure.
Do the right thing, stay home if you're sick. If you don't feel good, that's probably the best thing. Sort of is going to happen quick when we go through this, we'll be on the deceleration side on that quickly, too. Watch that hospitalization. We're going to continue to monitor that, continue to work closely with Peterson to make sure that, that system doesn't get overly stressed, and we're watching that with the region, too, on a weekly basis, actually on a daily basis, for getting that information. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Chief. Okay, we come to the Visitor Citizens Forum. You were to have filled out a speaker request form and get it to the city secretary. This agenda item is provided to all citizens who have signed up ahead of time to address the council any item not related to another specific item on the agenda. And the city council may not discuss or take action on any item, but may place the issue on a future agenda. Ms. McLean, do we have any signed up for the speakers?
Yes, sir, we do. Bethany Puccio?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Bethany Puccio. Sorry. I live within the city limits of Kerrville on Cresters Drive. I represent We the People, Liberty in Action as well. I lead the local government group there. I do want to, I wanted to address the ARPA funds that the city received and apparently spent, I think, over a million of that, but that's not for tonight, so I'm going to, I'll come back to that maybe next, next meeting. I did want to address the Public Safety Complex since we did get that report tonight, and just say that going from $17 million, $7 million in '21, $10 million in '22, to a $45 million estimation is just a huge jump. And that's for an empty shell, for, just for the citizens that maybe don't know that. If you pick the building up and shake it, nothing will fall out. There's no equipment in there, there's no furnishings in there at that $45 million, and it may even be more than that by the time we finish. So I just would like to ask the council, I know you can't respond to me, but what were we going to do with $17 million? A third of the money needed. When were we going to break ground? There was, you know, kind of fingers pointed toward the let us vote petitioners that we had stopped the police department from being built, but I just have to ask if it's $17 million being borrowed in '22, and it's a $45 million project, it just doesn't make sense that we were going to do it that way. And I would just like to point out again that Ms. Eichner said you can't fix stupid, and I'm not sure if that was just toward me or toward all the petitioners, or I'm not sure who that was toward, but definitely the voters are not stupid. And we could see that this project was probably not going to be funded through $17 million, and we did want it put to a vote so that there could be transparency to the project and also for proper planning. This project was always going to be funded through taxpayers, through the property tax, and I just wanted to point that out again, that this was always going to be property tax funded. And this will place the burden because of the 30% or so, it's a little under that, of retirees that are in Kerrville over 65, and the taxes being frozen, that really puts the burden of this on the working class. And so I hope that there's a consideration of that, that it's already sometimes hard to do that in Kerrville and raise families, and we do have a tendency for the young people to move away for better opportunity. I would just say that there was a lack of transparency maybe, or maybe it was just poor planning for this project, and, you know, when all this shakes out, I think that the taxpayers are going to be paying for this for a very long time, long after you're in office. So we really get stuck with the decisions that are made here, and that'll be long after you're in office. So I'm just concerned over the fact that aside from Councilman Garcia, this council decided to move ahead with a $17 million debt over the next two years for a project that's going to cost at least $45 million for an empty building, and I would ask in the future for more transparency and better planning for these kinds of projects. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peggy McKay?
Peggy McKay, Westchester Circle, Kerrville. First item that I wanted to ask about is a CIP report. The last one that's online is for July of 2021, and I checked again today. We have nothing for the last half of the year, and I know that it was updated at council, but it's not on the list online, on the website. And second, I want to refer to that last council meeting in December in the consent agenda, item number 4E, which was pulled for discussion, and subsequently, the item was approved with a 5-0 vote. The posted agenda indicated 4E to be minutes of a November 9th council workshop, when in reality, it contained the minutes of the city council meeting that same date. With the 72-hour period before the December meeting, or within that period, the error was discovered and was corrected, but the original agenda's posted reflected the incorrect reference. The Attorney General's Office is firm. No changes can be made once that agenda is posted in that 20, or 72-hour period. And then as I thought about this, I realized this wasn't the only time that things have changed in that 72-hour period, and I understand the expediency of changing, which in this case was a minor item and easily understood. But I think we need to keep in mind that we need to operate within the state law, and I believe that agenda items, if they need to be corrected, that in the future, if we could pull them, correct them, and then bring them back at a later date, and that would assure our compliance with the state law. And my comments are not meant to be a criticism. My comments merely want to keep us within state law and out of trouble. Thank you.
Thank you.
George Broody? And Mr. Broody is on, Mr. Broody is on Zoom, so...
Okay. Okay, do you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I wasn't sure I was going to be on here, but anyways, I would have called in the 5:00 p.m. meeting, however, no call and service was provided, so here I am to talk about the Public Safety Complex. One question that came out of watching that meeting is why was the report, or why has the report not been published or even presented publicly? That would have been helpful to any comments that I would have made. But I've listened to a lot of the talks surrounding this issue, such as required land, square footage of lost space, projected costs, and some of the wish list items. Until tonight, I hadn't heard anybody really discussing at all the impact to the budget or the possibility of implementing a phased approach. I heard earlier that the bond issuance is still projected to be $45 million, with some doubt as to whether or not that would even be enough to do the job. Let's assume $45 million borrowed over a 40-year term at the interest rate quoted previously with that CO back in the fall. This would require approximately $1.9 million of annual debt service for each of those 40 years. All other things being equal, this size of debt service would require an immediate average 16% increase in tax revenue. Due to Kerrville's high number of over 65 taxpayers, as everybody had mentioned earlier, with their frozen taxes, it would be potentially closer to 20% increase in city tax bills for the under 65 residents. Furthermore, $45 million borrowed under these terms would end up having a $75 million payout. That's 35, $30 million of interest. And with all due respect to the presentation earlier, nobody pays their taxes by the month. They only notice their property taxes at the end of the year, so $15 a month isn't what's going to be noticed, $169 will be. Everyone realizes that something needs to be done, most critically with the police department. However, I'm unsure if the current city tax base can support that kind of expense, and I would hate to see the city being set up to fail, having citizens reject a bond election at the polls. I'm certainly no expert anymore than anybody else, however, it seemed that a phased or modular approach to this might be the more prudent, successful way to go. A common sense approach might be to secure enough land upfront, but only the most critical needs would be built out in an expandable fashion so that future expansion could be planned as true tax base growth and needs increase. If I recall correctly, a recent example of this method was done with the county jail expansion, where it was built in a way that it could be added on to due to proper planning. I would just suggest that you consider that, how you're going to sell that to the people, as Mr. Lehman pointed out, so that we don't actually fail at the polls. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bruce Stricki? And Mr. Stricki is also on Zoom.
Okay, just go to the next one.
She was checking, she... Do you have that? Yes, he's on the line.
Thank you all for letting me speak this evening. I showed up tonight, and the crowd scared me away, so I'm sorry I'm not there. I just wanted to commend you all. Look at, oh, I don't think I'm being heard?
Yes, you are.
Oh, I'm sorry. I wanted to commend you all with a full agenda. We've all been through the holidays and come into the new year, and this is a full agenda, and it just shows how the city works through everything, and I can tell you that in the private sector, it doesn't always work that way. And you guys have really stood up as always as our city council on leading us so well and ready to do the business of the city. And things are continuing to do well in Kerrville because you all lead us so positively and constructively forward, and I really appreciate that, that the city council comes, they do their work, they get paid a tremendous amount of money, as we all know, and I hope you're laughing. But it takes a lot of time to do what you do and lead us so well. You know, I listen to the speakers, and I listen, read the pieces in the paper, and I just want to encourage everyone in this new season as we head toward the elections in May to vote, because the folks who come and complain and point out little inconsistencies we would truly hear the voice of Kerrville. And we would hear folks that do not bring up items that are misinformation and poorly presented. And as George pointed out just a moment ago, the city was attempting to do the same thing that the school district and the county did by purchasing and reserving land that they knew they could create a plan on. And folks who didn't understand the process stood up and stopped it. And so now things are changing because instead of doing as George and Bethany would like to criticize us for, of putting a plan together and having all of our ducks in a row, like the school district and the county have done in the past, they have forced us to move in a way that is very different. And if we look at the bond elections for the school district and the county, we'll see very similar numbers, and that is for a very good reason. And if people actually think about the way things are done and the way municipalities work, they would understand what, how the processes really work. And people who actually come to all the meetings and participate in the meetings and are constructive and positive and look for ways to move forward rather than to tear down our city, actually contribute in a way that moves us forward and makes us a better place. And that is what you folks do in the face of adversity every week and every meeting. You show up positively, you show up constructively, you listen to the citizens and their concerns, you take them into consideration in your votes, and you move us forward as a city in the best possible way. And I just want to thank you and wish you all a happy new year. I wish I could be there tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the end of the speakers, sir.
Okay.
As a statement of fact, can we get a response to the CIP reports on the city website?
Yes, as you know, we did report that to city council on the December workshop agenda. That has been updated per a text follow-up call that we had that got rescheduled. And so we'll make sure that that does get posted on the website, which is our usual practice.
Okay.
Let me just say, I want to do some clarification. A question's been raised about the seventeen million dollars, how that relates to the forty-five million. The seventeen million dollars was to pay for a real estate study, finding a site for the public safety complex, and then for buying the land. It was not for building a building. But so now the way that's gone, the forty-five million encompasses that plus building a building. And I think for council and city, we do need to do a better job of communicating different pieces of something like that. And the question about long after this council's gone, you know, this project is going to be going. To get a very needed public safety complex, yes, it stretches over time, including the related property tax. But the burden of property tax for the average homeowner in the projection of the forty-five million bond is a monthly fourteen dollars and eight cents. All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items pulled by individuals who have signed up to speak?
No one has pulled items, sir.
All right. Any council members wanting to pull an item?
Yes, I wanted to pull A, and not that I'm against it, I just wanted to point out exactly what that's going to do.
Okay, all right.
I move that we approve items four B and C on the consent agenda, mayor.
Second.
Go to second, motion second, all in favor, leaving, the raised hands. All right, let's go to four A, Ms. Agner.
Yes, it's just that this is, this is going to go for our generators, and it will enable, and maybe, do we have somebody from staff maybe that can explain it better than I? But that, I mean, it's something we absolutely, positively need, and if they're not, that's okay.
Yeah, I can speak to it really quickly. So essentially, this is, as you know, SB three had a mandate for specific to water systems and the ability to continue to serve should the state's power grid go down, similar to what it did last year with winter storm Uri. And so with that, this is one phase. It's not the only piece we're doing. We're looking at other ability to bring on other generators. We're getting grant opportunities to do that. This is specifically for auto starts for five of our existing generators that we have on our water system. They're currently manual flip. Well, as you know, in the hill country, what often happens is that, you know, when our roads ice over, our personnel are twenty-four seven, but, you know, it's difficult to be able to move around. And so oftentimes, it's much easier when you have an auto start system. So as soon as the power grid goes off, those generators start up. Because they are a little bit antiquated generator technology, they don't have those auto starts right now. And so this work will put those auto starts on those five critical generators that will help us be better prepared should another winter storm occur, or any power grid failure for that matter. Does that answer your question?
It does, it does, yes. Needed very much badly.
I guess now that we're on it, did they, the contractor, S and S that we're looking at, we put out, and we got more than one bid probably. Was this the lowest, or how do we qualify this one as the best?
So we sought quotes under emergency purchase authorization, but we obviously did, as always, want to be very judicious with taxpayer dollars. And so we sought quotes in the nature of time. There were three that were presented. One was for sixty-nine thousand, this one was for seventy thousand. We did feel like, given our prior experience with this contractor and that they are a local contractor, the council has the authority to be able to move forward with that quote.
Perfect, thank you.
Do I hear a motion for A?
I will move that we approve four A.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, raised hands. Okay. Now we go to a whole series of public hearings. And let me say that if you, if you, if you want to speak to an item in a public hearing, you don't have to do the advance sign up and so forth, so you can come to the microphone and speak. All right, Mr. Paxton.
Thank you, mayor. This is.
Let me read this in, please.
Yeah.
Resolution number zero one, twenty twenty-two. A resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit on the property comprising lot sixteen and part of lot fifteen, block seven, Hillcrest Edition, and more commonly known as nine sixty Prescott Street North. Said property is located within a single-family residential zoning district R one and making said permit subject to conditions and restrictions.
Thank you. Didn't mean to ignore you.
No worries.
Okay, Mr. Paxton.
Thank you, mayor and council. This is a request for a short-term rental at nine sixty Prescott. This was heard with the Planning and Zoning Commission last month and actually was denied. So this is an appeal to council. It is consistent with the comprehensive plan. I did not receive any comments from any adjacent property owners. It is nearby, of course, the Kerrville Shriner Golf Course, near, or at least within short distance to the sports complex. Two major collectors in town to get around town and not a far distance from downtown. And here's a map showing, the blue dot there is the pending proposal to previously approved conditional use permits there on Tyvee Street. There's a little larger view, this portion of town. Again, the blue is the pending request. Red have been approved by a conditional use permit previously, and the green were grandfathered prior to that twenty nineteen ordinance being put in place. And here's the site plan of the property. And they do have an existing garage and driveway that would accommodate the required parking as per the resolution. I'd be pleased to answer any questions before or after the public hearing. The applicant is here to speak for the case as well.
Okay, I've got a question, and I don't want to prejudice anything on this, particularly. We have increasing numbers of these requests for CUPs for the short-term rental units. And we, granted, I think virtually all of them. We know a sister city that has really run into trouble because they had so many. And we have a good ordinance, and that's going to prevent some people from, you know, applying and want to go with this. But do we have, do we have any way to limit the numbers? Or is it just a matter of just deciding to not grant them?
It's one of the things the Planning Commission did discuss, is trying to figure out in the future what ordinance amendments need to be made to make sure we don't hit that threshold of where is too many, whether that's multiple different requirements that they're discussing. Certainly hadn't gotten any recommendation to city council yet. Other communities nearby have had short-term rentals as part of their culture much longer than Kerrville has. Also a much different level of tourism than Kerrville has. So on a percentage basis, where they're sitting close to, you know, one, two, three, four, five percent of their parcels are now short-term rentals, we're just barely coming up on one percent of our parcels, or excuse me, point one percent. We've got roughly eleven thousand tax parcels, and we're just bumping up on seventy short-term rental units versus the seven to eight hundred units in a town that's, you know, half our size. So I certainly don't think we're reaching that threshold where we have a problem, where we're overburdening the neighborhoods. But that public hearing process that we do have, I think, will help balance that out over time. And the Planning Commission is certainly sensitive to that and their recommendations and is reviewing that and discussing that to see if they can come up with some future solution to that question.
Well, I will say that very near this particular location, where there's another short-term rental, I'm seeing what a good job they're doing of updating and everything else. I've seen that in other places, just a question, and I hear it from the public as well.
Right.
All right, council, before we go to public hearing?
Yes, well, I had a question for the owners.
Okay, all right.
I have a question. I'm going to put Chief Thomason on the spot, or did you want to see if place one had a question first?
No, go ahead.
Go ahead.
You don't have to answer, or Assistant Chief Thomason, but I just want to, just in your experience, do you find that there are significant problems with short-term rentals that the police are being called out to oversee?
Good evening, mayor and council. To answer your question, no, no, we do not see significant issues, so.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you.
As you recall, that was a previous council question. We did go back and research our records. We were unable to find any complaints. And as you know, as part of the new requirements within the zoning code, these owners are, they do have to essentially register a local property manager if a problem should occur.
Okay, the public hearing is open at six forty-five. Do we have a list of speakers?
We do have Speaker Matthew Sletton.
Okay.
Good evening, Matt Sletton, three twenty-four Clay Street, Kerrville, Texas. I would be the property manager for this particular property. I have a property management business that is based here in Kerrville. We have been in business for over twenty years here locally to take this on. The owner of the property as well, Ms. Erin Spillers, is here. She is also a Kerrville, a Kerrville local as well, still lives here in town, and will be dual managing this project. So there will be, you know, immediate access for any, any sort of problems or concerns with any guests, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year through our, through our local management company and all of our contacts and resources. To speak briefly to the Fredericksburg comparison, just to kind of throw some ideas out there. You know, Fredericksburg has approximately seven thousand tax parcels and approximately seven hundred short-term rentals currently registered there. So roughly ten percent of their, of their homes are currently in this particular situation. You know, as Mr. Paxton had noted, Kerrville's at a little less than one-half of one percent here so far. So there's a, there's a factor there, a twenty times greater factor in Fredericksburg than there currently is in Kerrville. So Kerrville's not even anywhere close to approaching any sort of saturation point like Fredericksburg is in terms of the number of short-term rentals that are, that are currently in use and in place. Additionally, as, as this market does continue to grow in Kerrville and, and, you know, given the conditions around the nation, it's clearly going to continue to expand and something that this will need to be continually looked at and managed by the city overall. We also need to remember that basic principles of economics are going to come into play here as well in terms of supply and demand. Demand here is still extremely high, you know, for something like this. When, when you get to that point where there's just no longer the demand or the demand for this starts to decrease, you know, because, or because the supply gets too great, you know, the lesser properties are going to winnow themselves out as it goes. So, you know, from an, from an economic standpoint, that's, should be pretty, pretty cut and dried. We do, we do believe that, that this initially failed at planning and zoning because Ms. Spillers was unexpectedly called out of town the very day of that meeting, and in her rush wasn't able to, to make arrangements to be at the meeting in and of itself. There was, you know, but there was no objection from any neighbors. She has talked to neighbors, most specifically Mr. Will Menke, who's the only property that has any sort of immediate adjoining thing. Everything else is separated by, by streets, alleyways, buildings. And he's very supportive, supportive, supportive of the project overall. When you do look at the location and how close it is to so many local amenities, including the hospital downtown, the sports complex, the golf course, and it's walking distance to most of these things, as far as all of that goes. Again, as we mentioned earlier, it's going to have the, the local onsite management, you know, as well. You know, it's, quite frankly, to me, it's a slam dunk. I just don't see any reason, and there's no opposition as to why this shouldn't be approved for a conditional use permit for a short-term rental. If anybody does have any additional questions, Ms. Spillers or myself would be happy to answer them.
I just wanted to see if the applicant had anything else to add to that. I appreciate the comments you made, and I appreciate the letter that you sent. I saw that, and I did follow up and re-watch the P and Z meeting and saw their denial on your project. Did you have anything else to add on that? Okay, thank you.
And you've answered my question, so, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve.
Ms. Meisberg, do we have anyone in the lobby that would like to speak?
Okay.
And then we also have to wait to close the public hearing.
Okay.
No, ma'am.
Okay. At six fifty, we are out of the public hearing.
Hello, mayor.
We need to make sure that Zoom also.
Yes.
Do we have a Zoom person?
Ms. Franchina, do we have anyone with their hand raised?
Yes, we do. We have George Broody.
Okay, George Broody. Okay.
Okay, George, George Broody, sixteen sixteen Glen Road. The, it sounds like you're going to have, about to approve it anyway, so that kind of goes with what I think should happen. But section two of the resolution says, "In addition to the development and use regulations currently applicable to the property, development and use of the property is subject to the following additional conditions." Unfortunately, the conditions that are listed there, there's only one. It's actually additional to the regulations currently applicable, and that's that guest notification. And that's as simple as posting a piece of paper. There's no enforcement to the posting. I mean, you can, all you can do is hold them accountable to having it posted. It says on it something to the effect of, "Use proper etiquette with noise." And people should park in the off-street parking. It doesn't require it because it can't. I suppose it can, but you don't, you're not adding it. And what tonight is highlighting is you have six short-term rentals on your agenda, one of which was turned down by P and Z for no discernible reason other than the applicant wasn't there to answer any questions. But the property is no real different than any of the other ones that are being approved. And if you deny this, they probably have a due process claim, which is the reason we need to look at these conditional, these conditions because none of them are truly mitigating negative impacts of these CUPs. When you list, one is occupancy taxes. Well, they already have to pay those for any short-term rental. Sign ordinance, that's already in place. Offsite parking minimums, there's no requirement that they park on the offsite spots. It just has to be available. So there's really no conditions that are being applied. Somebody needs to look at that and consider what we're doing with it because I don't see how you can turn anybody down unless you distinguish their property from the ones you've been passing. That's all, thanks.
Thank you.
Ms. Franchina, do we have anyone else on Zoom?
We have no other callers.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll announce again, six fifty-three, the public hearing is over. Council, any questions?
Just one final thing, we had recently. We had recently talked about that, some of the things that Mr. Buridi brought up again, and I know P and Z has looked at some of the zoning changes and done updates at, at their meetings, and I believe the Code Review Committee has also taken a look at it. What's the status of that, and, and what are we gonna be doing in the future? I don't wanna have this conversation every short-term rental on our agenda or in the future, but what's the status on that, and what are we looking at doing for the future?
The Planning and Zoning Commission agreed that the current conditional use permit process is adequate for both short-term rental and other conditional uses within the code. So they were, they recommended no changes to the ordinance.
Okay.
All right, any other work from counsel? Is there a motion on this matter?
I make a motion that we approve Resolution Number zero-one dash twenty-two.
Second.
All right, we got a motion second. All in favor, raise hands. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Right. Ms. McLennan, would you read in Resolution Number oh-two, two-oh, two-two?
Resolution Number zero-two, twenty-twenty-two. A resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit on the property consisting of two tracts of land comprising approximately one-point-five-eight-seven acres, being part of survey number one-twenty-three, abstract number two-twenty-five, and more commonly known as seventeen ninety-six Arcadia Loop. Said property is located within a medium-density residential zoning district R-two, and making said permit subject to conditions and restrictions.
All right, Mr. Paxton.
Thank you, Mayor. This case, again, was with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and December second was approved with unanimous vote. It is a short-term rental as well, and here's a map showing its grandfathered one down the street on Arcadia Loop. It's really not anymore in this immediate area of town. Here is a copy of that site plan. This is just on the, kind of the high side of the street. They do own property on both sides of the street. Again, consistent with the comprehensive plan, it does include the standard conditions as approved by the Planning Commission. Be pleased to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
All right, counsel, questions or comments?
Did you show the parking, any diagram for that?
Sorry, it does not actually show the parking, but you can see, get the mask off if you want, this is a garage.
That's a.
The driveway goes all the way back.
Okay. I saw the driveway, I was just wondering if one of those was a garage as well, just curious.
And there is also a gate, roughly at the front edge of the house, there's room to park three or four cars before the gate.
Okay.
And obviously plenty of room behind that.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Counsel, anything else? Can we go to public hearing at six fifty-six? And, all right.
I didn't have anything to add, I was just gonna comment on the parking if there were any questions.
Okay, all right, you come in on answering questions?
Yes.
Are you the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, nice to meet you. I was just curious, what's going to the, the bottom side of your property? I'm just curious, is anything gonna happen with that?
No, we've cleared quite a bit of the land there to make it, it was pretty overgrown, so at this point, it's just a little bit easier to access down near the water.
Okay.
But we're not planning to put anything. It'll just be rocks and.
Do you provide a boat for, for your people?
What's that?
Provide a boat for your people?
Uh, no, but we did leave them the number to the local kayak rental place. We're trying to work a deal out to see if they would drop it off for people, but.
Oh, there you go.
Can you give your name and address, please?
Absolutely.
Yes, I'm Sean Alston, seventeen ninety-six Arcadia Loop. It's the property we're talking about, I live in Austin, Texas.
Okay, okay.
And you have, you will have someone right here to take calls?
Yes, yes.
All right. Counsel, any other questions? Okay, do we have anyone else to speak to this?
Ms. Franchina, does anyone have their hand raised?
No, ma'am.
Let me say, I went out and looked at your property, and it's a good location.
Yes.
And there's some other good vacation rentals on Arcadia Loop, but for the privacy and location and all, it's nice.
Thank you.
I probably shouldn't have said that before we voted. Okay, do we have a motion on this matter?
Do any of the gentlemen here, y'all have anything else to say? Okay, thank.
They're just friendly neighbors who brought along.
Okay.
Didn't need anyone to vouch for us.
There you go, backing you up.
I move that we adopt Resolution Number oh-two dash twenty-two as presented.
All right.
I'll second.
Got a motion second? All in favor, if you raise your hands, and it carries unanimously. All right, thank.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution Number oh-three, twenty-two.
Resolution Number zero-three, twenty-two. A resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit on the property comprising a part of lots twenty-one and twenty-two, block eight Lowry Edition, more commonly known as four-hundred Lowry Street South. Said property is located within a single-family residential with accessory dwelling unit zoning district R-one-A, and making said permit subject to conditions and restrictions. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, it's a public hearing.
Mr. Paxton.
Thank you. Another short-term rental that was heard by the Planning Commission on December third was approved by unanimous vote. Again, similar conditions as approved by the Planning Commission, and this is a map showing the adjacent area. Again, the red have been approved by conditional use permit, blue is the pending one, and the green is non-conforming.
Wait, you said non-conforming? Grandfather?
Grandfather, yes, excuse me. Little larger view, catching both sides of Junction Highway and getting closer to downtown. And here's the parking on this one. We have talked to the applicant, parking may need a little adjustment, but we will work with the applicant prior to starting operations to make sure that parking can be met for those four parking spaces.
What does that mean?
The, the way it's configured on this drawing, there is not room to stack front-to-back four, or two cars. Side-by-side, there is room, but unless that shed comes down, they don't have the almost forty-foot depth that would be required without intruding into the street. So they'll either need to go four sideways, or side-by-side to get that depth, or open that garage up to be a usable parking space, or that small shed to be usable parking space. But we will work with the applicant, obviously they're not gonna make that investment until they're approved, so we'll, we'll follow up with them on that before they start operating.
Okay, that makes me feel better, because I was concerned about before, that wasn't room.
And they do have the option of putting a driveway out front as well, so, and they, they've got multiple ways they could meet that parking.
Okay, yes, there would be, yes, okay.
That's an area where there's a lot of activity right now.
There is.
Okay, if there, counsel, anything else? And, okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing at seven oh-one. Do you have any speakers to this item?
Ms. Mysburg, is anyone in the lobby that would like to speak? And just as a reminder, on Zoom, if you would raise your hand by either participating or star nine for telephone.
Okay.
No, there's no one in the lobby, I believe the applicant is right here.
Okay.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, seven oh-one, public hearing is closed. Do I hear a motion on this item?
I move that we author, or approve Resolution Number oh-three dash twenty-two.
I'll second.
Okay, second?
She's second. Counselor, he's.
Second here, okay. All right, all in favor, raise hands, and it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, Resolution O, number oh-four, twenty-two.
Resolution Number zero-four, twenty-two. A resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit on the property comprising part of lot thirty-one, block one-zero-six Westminster Edition, and more commonly known as eighteen oh-seven East Main Street North. Said property is located within a single-family residential zoning district R-one, and making said permit subject to conditions and restrictions. No one has signed up for this item, however, it is public hearing.
All right, okay, Mr. Paxton.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this one's December second, the Planning and Zoning Commission, adjacent to Shriner University on East Main Street. And there are two pending requests, now you see those two blue icons there, and it's showing the other adjacent ones around, around this neighborhood. And here's the parking on this one, they, they can meet those four parking spaces, either this configuration or side-by-side. The driveway's actually paved wider than this original survey had it, so they actually have more space than shown.
Okay, clarify this for me, is this right next to the mini-mars?
No. This actually is right next to the north corner of Shriner Campus. I'd say these are the new apartments that Shriner penned in a few years ago.
Oh, got you, got you.
Here's the ball fields.
Okay, yeah.
Great location.
So, to clarify, Drew, if we had complaints from neighbors, that would be part of your presentation?
Yes.
No comments been received.
No comments been received.
All right. Okay, counsel, any other questions? Public hearing is open at seven oh-four.
No one in the lobby, this is the applicant.
Okay, all right.
Ms. Franchina, is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak?
No.
Hey, no questions at this point from counsel?
You will be, if you would, you'll be handling this yourself?
No, I have a management company.
You, you will come to the microphone, please.
I'm gonna have a management company. Do both of mine.
And if you give us your name and address?
Cali Pipes, nine oh-eight Jefferson Street, Kerrville, Texas.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so somebody else will be doing that for you?
Yes.
Yes, okay, very good.
All right, seven oh-four, the public hearing is closed. Counsel, can do I hear a motion?
I move, we move that we approve Resolution Number zero-four dash twenty-two.
Okay. Motion second?
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor, let me, be sure by the raised hands. All right, good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We're on Resolution oh-four twenty-two?
Five.
Resolution Number zero-five, twenty-two.
All right, if you read it in.
A resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit on the property comprising lot thirty-five, part of lot thirty-four, block one-zero-six Westminster Annex Edition, and more commonly known as two oh-five Westminster. Said property is located within a single-family residential zoning district R-one, and making said permit subject to conditions and restrictions.
All right.
This conditional use permit.
Paxton.
This conditional use permit was reviewed by the Planning Commission on December second as well, just around the corner on Westminster Street, backs up to Shriner. Again, same maps on this one. And there's the site plan. Again, this part of town, the long driveway down the side of the property, more than, more than enough space to park, to meet the required parking currently, so they won't actually have to make any additional improvements.
And they're gonna have a nicely reconstructed street.
They will.
Okay, counsel, any questions?
Will you be handling it yourself?
Uh, no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're, we're, counsel right now, and then we'll go to public hearing.
All right, okay, sorry.
All right, okay. Public hearing at seven oh-six. Go ahead.
Okay, now, will you be handling this yourself?
No, ma'am, we have a management company also, and I happen to live next door.
Oh, okay, there you go. And would you give us your name?
The, the young lady just left, she's my daughter, and she's one house over from me, behind me, so we're kind of all right there.
If you give us your name and address.
My name's Abel Paredes, and I'm at two oh-seven Westminster.
Okay, all right, good, good.
So you'll know firsthand if they're out of line.
On both sides.
Okay, any other speakers? Okay, seven oh-seven, we're out of the public hearing. Is there a motion?
We do have a speaker on Zoom, sir.
Okay. So, ignore the getting out of public hearing.
And the speaker on Zoom, would you please state your name and address?
Hey, y'all, I just wanted to, Bruce Strickey, six fifteen Earl Garrett Street, I'm having a hard time using the phone on Zoom, and I apologize. I just wanted to come back on the broader issues of short-term rentals, which Drew outlined very well in the very beginning of all this. And if we look at the number of short-term rentals that we have here today and think about how that projects out, we, we really do not have a problem in Kerrville. We do need to look at our ordinance and tweaking it some perhaps, but the repeated issues that two certain speakers continue to bring up, that there are not conditions, are incorrect, because at the planning and zoning meetings, every time each one of these individual applications are addressed, the Planning and Zoning Commission looks at issues that are not necessarily listed as conditions, but are conditions for approval and recommendation to the City Council. And so to broadly say that we do not have specific conditions that apply to individual applications is incorrect, and we have seen applications turned down when they are not close to amenities and other locations in the city that make sense. For example, there have been applications for short-term rentals that are in the middle of residential neighborhoods where they literally do not make sense. And this is a perfect example of what is going wrong in Fredericksburg, where they do not have an ordinance and they only have an inspection process. This council and councils before have led Kerrville well, and we have a wonderful ordinance that does work. It may not be perfect, and so we may need to tweak it, but to have a, a couple of speakers bring up the same issues over and over and over, as misinformation is not productive or constructive for the city. And so I want to encourage people to come and bring constructive ideas to make our city better and to move us forward. If we look at the hotel tax and how it is changing, and how it is moving to short-term rentals away from hotels, and we think about the places that we're reserving for our own families, we will see that the world is changing, and that is a good thing, because when we become static, when we quit changing, when we quit adapting, we die. And we don't want Kerrville to die, we want Kerrville continuing to be the vibrant, wonderful place that it is, that we all love, and I hope that we will continue to do that. Thank you all for moving us forward in a positive, constructive direction. You guys are a great City Council.
All right, thank you. Do we have any other speakers on this matter? We close at seven-ten, and I ask for a motion on item five-E.
Well, before, before we do that, I'd just like to say that conditional use permit, the purpose for that is to identify lands that are not really appropriate in a specific zoning district, and so when we apply conditions in the resolution that we approved to those pieces of properties, when we're supposed to, when we're looking at these, we're supposed to be applying specific conditions to those properties, and that's why they really should be different on a case-by-case basis for the property. We see here that we have a list of six conditions that we put on every single property, so it's not really specific to the properties, it's a universal conditions, if you will. So just wanna, wanna clarify that, we're not really looking specifically at the property, although we do look at location, distance, that kind of things, but in terms of the conditions there, it's, they're universal. And so I was suggesting we should be looking, and I don't know if he was alluding to me as one of them, but we should be looking more specifically as, at the properties and specific conditions.
Let, let me just say, I don't, I don't exactly know the specifics of that, but the, the legality of a CUP is you do look at it in, with respect to that specific property, that's the first analysis. It, does it make sense for, in these places, for a short-term rental unit to be at this location, yes or no, right? And then you apply conditions, and if the, if the property is generally in a residential area, then the conditions are gonna be the same, and they're, they're gonna look the same.
Yep.
Okay, do I hear a motion on five?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number zero-five dash twenty-two.
Second.
I have got a motion second. All in favor, it'll let it be known with a raised hand. Okay. Now we go to Resolution Number oh-six, twenty-two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution Number zero-six, twenty-two. A resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit on the property comprising lot five- A resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit on the property comprising lot 5, block 42, Westland Place Edition, and more commonly known as 600 Wood Lawn Avenue North. Said property is located within a single-family residential zoning district R1 and making said permits subject to conditions and restrictions. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
All right. Mr. Paxton again.
Thank you, mayor. This was approved by the Planning Commission by unanimous vote on December 2nd. We do have the same conditions that apply to that short-term rental use in the residential area. Here's the map showing the request. Two conditional use permits that have been approved and two nearby grandfathered properties. And again, a little larger, looking at this property in comparison down to the river and downtown. And here's the site plan. And they actually have much more driveway than this. Let me show an aerial photo. You can see on this photo that they've got the garage, more than enough room for four cars. And there's actually a side parking adjacent to that, that you can see. That looks like a truck and trailer and aerial whenever that was taken. So more than enough room to meet the required parking. With that, be pleased to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
Counsel, questions on this matter? All right. Public hearing's open at 7:14.
Ms. Francina, is there anyone on Zoom with their hand raised?
Yes, we have one caller. Caller ending 8711. Please unmute and say your first, last name and your address.
Jeanette in Tobin, Tilly, and our address is 524 Oakland Hills Lane, Kerrville.
Thank you, you can go ahead and continue speaking if you have anything.
Oh, I was just gonna say thank you for the consideration. And it's a family operation. It's my husband and two of our adult children that live in Kerrville. And the three of us are managing, will plan to manage it together. So there shouldn't be any reason why it would be not properly operated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other speakers? If not, 7:16, the public hearing is closed. Counsel, any, anything else on this matter?
I'll move that we approve resolution number 06-2022.
I'll second.
Okay. All right, motion second. All in favor, raise your right hand. And it carries unanimously. Resolution number 07-2022.
Resolution number 07-2022. A resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a convenience store with fuel sales on this property consisting of lots 6, 7, 8, 9, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, block 2 of the G Street South Edition, and more commonly known as 1001 Sidney Baker Street South. Said property is located within a mixed-use zoning district M U and making said permit subject to certain conditions and restrictions. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Okay. Ms. Paxton.
I'll switch it up a little bit on you. Conditionally used permit that Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed December 2nd for a convenience store with fuel sales. Now, this isn't existing mini-mart convenience store. They are doing a rebuild on this property, enlarging the footprint. And there is no, or it is consistent with the Kerrville 2050 plan, since there is no change in the base zoning for that mixed-use zoning district. And there will be no impact expected on the thoroughfare since it is at the intersection of a collector and an arterial. In fact, they're actually reducing the number of curb cuts, so the impact on traffic should get, should improve. The applicant representative is here. I'd be pleased to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
All right, let's, uh, counsel, any questions on this?
Just, how many additional fuel pumps will there be?
Right now, there are four, I'm David Martin, 343 West Water Street. There are four pumps and the new canopy will be over 16 pumps.
16?
16 pumps.
Wow. Okay. Well, will the store enlarge, Ben? This, will the store also enlarge?
Yes. The footprint is gonna be about 1,000 square feet bigger than the existing one, but they're all moved further back on the site. It is gonna be a replat, so we're taking in a number of the other lots and moving both the canopy and the store back further on the site so that there's more room for maneuvering and, and so forth.
All right. Counsel members, other questions?
I don't have any questions, I just have a clerical issue because it, it's listed as a short-term rental.
Oh, on the, on the document?
Yeah, so I, I just wanted to clear that up before.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah.
Can you say that again, where is it?
Okay, if you go to page three of this resolution. It lists it as a short-term rental location.
We'll get that cleared up. As long as you all obviously know this is a short-term rental. Properly listed in the.
Yeah, that would be an interesting short-term rental with 16 pumps.
I don't think it would do very well.
Yeah. Okay. Counsel, anything else, and then we'll go to the open hearing. Right, 17, 7:19, we're in open hearing. One question I've got. So when you're approaching the front of that mini-mart, over the left is a unpaved area. So that'll be paved right up to that memorial?
I'm, I'm sorry? Up to the memorial, what do you?
Memorial Boulevard.
I mean, you border, you border a World War I memorial.
No, no, no.
No. No.
Different, different spot?
Yes.
G Street and Highway 16.
East Street and 16.
It's Sidney Baker.
South, Sidney Baker.
Ah. Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
Going towards like Medina.
I've seen the G Street elsewhere, okay, okay, yeah.
Yes.
Never mind, okay. So what is around you there?
Uh, there's the bank on the other side, on the opposite side of Sidney Baker. And there's a James Avery facility across G Street. So this is on the corner of G Street and Sidney Baker South.
Yeah, okay.
And the whole, the whole property is with.
If you, if you give your name and.
I'm Sylvia Fritz, I'm the partner with my brother David Fritz in the mini-mart. 1600 Broadway is office address, and I live on 210 LeVault and Center Point. But the whole, our, the back, that property was originally bought and the whole behind the store that you don't see is a lot of the property that we, that our dad bought back in the 70s. So it's all, all around us is basically lots of land that, behind us that we already had, had always owned. And then the banks on the one side, the G Street, and then the Avery's is on the corner of the G and Sidney Baker, and then where our store is.
Uh huh, okay.
This'll be one of your largest then.
Nice.
Yes.
He's done a good job, he's working on it.
That's good.
Yeah, okay. All right, any, do we have any speakers?
Ms. Meisber and Ms. Francina, do we have any speakers?
We have no speakers, no callers.
No speakers.
Thank you.
All right, then it's 7:21, I'll close the public hearing. And do we hear a motion on this matter?
I move that we adopt or approve resolution number 07-2022.
A second.
All right, okay, you get a second, okay. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. Now, I didn't want to prejudice the vote, but I will say this. I thank the Fritz family for all that they do for this community. And the fact that it's a local business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
When do you anticipate starting?
Probably sometime in late spring.
Okay.
We'll have to demolition first, and the store will be closed for a while then. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. It was mixed up on the location. Now I got it. Okay. Would you read in 6A?
Ordinance number 2020, 2022-03. An ordinance annexing two tracts of land plus an adjacent public driveway that exists as part of the Coronado Drive into the corporate limits of the city of Kerrville, Texas. Such property making up approximately 16.85 acres and generally located north and west of the 700 block of Coronado Drive. Each property more specifically described in the ordinance and being located within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city, adopting the service agreement establishing the zoning for the annexed property as a single-family residential zoning district R1, rezoning an adjacent tract of land currently located within the city by changing its zoning to an R1 zoning district and providing other matters relating to the subject. We do have three citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Okay. Counsel, Mr. Paxton and the counsel.
Thank you, mayor. This is a request for annexation and zoning. Go through a couple, a couple steps to that. As you can see, this area in gray is to be annexed and includes a portion of Coronado Drive that was dedicated to the city. Also includes, if you can see on your screen, this light hatched area to be rezoned from RE to R1. That area is already inside the city limits. And then this area here, down, following this blue line, is inside the city limits and is already zoned R1. So the request is to annex the gray area, rezone this hatched area to R1, and the annexation to R1 as well. So kind of two different pieces to that request. The request is consistent with the future land use plan, the Kerrville 2050 plan. And there is no expected traffic impact. This area was intended to be residential. It does have access to existing local streets and access to an existing collector's street on Coronado. And here's the site plan that the applicant has proposed. And they are not tied to this site plan, but that was just part of their request. The Planning and Zoning Commission did hear this in October and actually recommended residential estate zoning to match the neighborhood to the north. The request was with the petition annexation for R1 single-family, which doesn't allow for more of the traditional lot size neighborhood matching the neighborhood immediately to the south. With that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions before or after the public hearing. The applicant and their representatives are here to speak as well as the neighborhood.
Can you address what had come up as concerns by the citizens there below these properties in regard to drainage?
I can. I know the applicant's gonna go into that as well. During the public hearing at Planning Commission, they did wanna, wanna look at the drainage and kind of preliminary drainage analysis, showing what that impact would be, because the neighborhood behind is uphill. So they do have some current drainage that comes down that hill. The applicant's shown their design to show what that impact would be in the future. At the end of the day, the drainage is a requirement of the engineering department and the design engineer to make sure there's not any future impact or any additional impact by that development. So what's, what drains today is natural land, is what would be the maximum impact of what could drain his developed land. And so they've got, they can share more details on that.
Well, and I think we also, I see a familiar face over there from Planning and Zoning Commission meetings. So it looks like we have a representative from the neighborhood, maybe two, that could probably also speak to their concerns.
Drew, can, Drew, um, can you just tell me exactly what happened at P&amp;Z so that I understand the request being made for R1 at that point with them? So what actually transpired at P&amp;Z? Did they deny the request for R1? Or did they not act on it and suggest that it come forward to council to be considered as RE?
So the request did come in with R1, again, to, to make this kind of development plan that they have. The Planning Commission can make a different recommendation so long that it is more restrictive than what the request is. So for example, if it came in as a single-family, they can't recommend commercial, and that would be less restrictive. But, but requesting or recommending more restrictive for the residential estates does limit it to one-acre lots at a minimum, which is obviously much different than the R1 traditional single-family neighborhood.
Okay.
Because it's a petitioned annexation request, still comes to council as the original request with R1, carrying council or commission's recommendation for RE.
That's tricky.
So counsel has the discretion to either go R1 or RE, approve or deny.
What I'm curious on is why do we have an ordinance presented to council ignoring the recommendation that P&amp;Z came to us and instead going with R1 instead of RE?
It's because it is a petitioned annexation, they're requesting annexation with R1. That is part of the applicant's request, because it is their request for annexation. But we do, as our policy, we carry those annexation requests to Planning Commission for a recommendation.
Right, okay.
Counsel, any questions?
Not at this time for me.
All right. 7:28, we go into open hearing. Do we have speakers? Give us name and address.
Greg Richards, 280 Thompson Drive, and I represent the owner of this property that's seeking the annexation and zoning. I can skip over some of what I was going to say because Drew covered that pretty well, but I wanna highlight some of the issues that are at play here and why this owner feels like the R1 zoning is appropriate if the city agrees to voluntarily annex this property. First, my understanding is that city staff's initial recommendation to P&amp;Z was to zone this property as R1. When the Heights of Kerrville, which is the gated community that's just to the north, when it was developed, there was a comprehensive drainage plan that was approved by the city. It bears the, the stamp of the city engineer and approval by the city in the lower right-hand corner. As part of the design of this drainage plan, you'll see in this next slide, the area that I've highlighted in blue is the property that is the subject of the annexation, zoning, and rezoning request. And the, the way that property was designed for this drainage plan is almost identical to the way that this developer intends to develop this project. Same number of lots, 44 lots. And the drainage structures, it's hard to see on there, but if you're familiar with Coronado Street as you're headed north on it, there are two pretty significantly sized stormwater detention facilities on the right side of the road. Those were all designed to drain this particular area from the heights all the way down through the property that is the subject of the application. This particular piece of property is what's commonly referred to as a donut hole. It's an unannexed portion of property that has city limits on all sides of it. And the city's 2050 plan encourages this infill development. The neighborhood that is immediately to the south is the Village Glen subdivision. And the developer in this case, keep in mind that at this stage of the game, drainage is not typically an issue that gets addressed. That comes later, and it's incumbent upon the city's engineer and the developer's engineer to make sure that the development of this property does not have a negative impact on stormwater flow onto adjacent properties. However, in an effort to assuage the concerns of P&amp;Z and of the neighbors that spoke, the developer went to some extra steps and had the engineer do some analysis to try to make sure that this was not going to have any negative impact on the neighbors. One of the things that the developer did to try to address continuity with the neighboring subdivision is you'll notice on the later slide is that all of the lots that border the homes on Mountain Laurel Drive, all of the lot lines of the proposed development match up identically to those that are on Mountain Laurel Drive. They're all, an R1 zone would require a 50-foot width as the minimum width. And the width of these lots are about 90 feet wide as they border the lots that are on Mountain Laurel Drive, and then the rest of the property averages about 80 feet in width, save and except the cul-de-sac lots, which are pie-shaped, and so they have a bit of a different configuration. When the developer had his engineer, Welburn Engineering, and members of their staff are here today to answer any questions if, if you'd like to ask them, they were able to do a study to show that the area in blue there, that includes part of the Heights subdivision, but it's a hillside. And so you can see from the, the topographical data that that entire area in blue is what drains across the existing homes on Mountain Laurel Drive. And so it's about 24.26 acres. And right now, when it rains, all that water runs downhill. And it is, there is a significant drainage issue, if you watch the P&amp;Z videos. Some of the neighbors in the neighborhood presented. some videos that showed some pretty significant stormwater drainage over their property. So when the developer looked at how this project is planned to be developed, what they were able to determine is that, uh, by putting in this street, that's the one that runs parallel to Mountain Laurel Drive, it's the, uh, southernmost road, uh, that runs east to west on this slide, that, that road would capture eighteen point twelve of the twenty-five acres in terms of stormwater drainage. And what this developer is planning is to put that stormwater underground, redirect it east towards Coronado Drive and into the existing drainage structures that were approved as part of the master drainage plan. So you're taking away a significant portion of the drainage that would otherwise come across those lots on Mountain Laurel Drive, and instead of draining twenty-five acres, you're gonna drain about six point seven-six acres. And according to some analysis that the engineer did on some selective lots, the reduction in drainage was anywhere between fifty and seventy-five percent less than what is currently, uh, the case.
With the new development.
With the new development, yes. So it makes sense logically to think if you, if you put a road and you have underground, underground stormwater capture and drainage, you're pulling it off of the downhill slope, you're redirecting it over into the drainage channels. Kyle Burrow, the city's engineer, pointed out during the meeting that, uh, you know, this is really within his purview and the developer's purview to really dig into the details and make sure that the stormwater, uh, issue, um, it, it, the developer's not required to improve it, although the plan is to do so. However, they cannot make it worse. And so that's a stage for, uh, somewhere down the road in this process. I've watched both of the P&amp;Z meetings, and there was, um, a, a lot of opposition from the neighborhood that this was going to worsen their stormwater issue. There really wasn't any data provided, uh, to establish that. And my takeaway in P&amp;Z's recommendation was that recommending a residential estates zoning was an accommodation to the neighbors to try to ameliorate their concerns about stormwater drainage. But there really wasn't a causal nexus or connection between, well, how does residential estates better the situation versus, uh, an R1 zone? Part of what's interesting is that if, if this was zoned RE, all of those lots that you see there that, uh, are in red along the north side of the new proposed street and the lots, um, well, I'm sorry, specifically the lots in the blue that are between, uh, Glenview Drive and, um, Laurel Wood Trail, I think there's about eight or nine lots there that if that was zoned RE, there would be probably a maximum of three lots there. Well, with eight lots, you have setbacks on both sides on every lot. With three lots, you have the same setbacks, so you have a lot more capacity to build impervious cover. And so, uh, the engineer's analysis was that with an RE zone, you could actually build more impervious cover that would make the stormwater drainage issue worse. When the Village Glen, uh, neighborhood was developed, you'll see that there are two stubouts, the Laurel Wood Trail and the Glenview Drive, that go into, uh, this particular property. And the developer's plan is to connect, as required by city code, uh, to those stubouts. And so this will be kind of a natural continuation of that Glenview subdivision. Similar lot size, similar markets, uh, and designed to be compatible with what is existing. So unlike the Heights, uh, which has two access points, both of which are gated and it's a private community, uh, this is designed to have a total of four access points, two off of the existing stubouts and then two off of Coronado Drive, one of those being a cul- cul-de-sac. Has some important points to mention. Um, I know housing has been a shortage, uh, been an issue in Kerrville, and this just adds to the, the solution of providing not necessarily workforce housing, but housing that, uh, will be affordable by a lot of the companies that are hiring people and bringing them to town, uh, to employ them.
Mr. Richards, if you'll kind of wrap it up, we may come back with questions.
You bet. So last point is that it makes sense for the city to annex this property and have control over it. Uh, as it sits now, it's in the county. Uh, there wa- is no zoning regulation, and so the, uh, the owner of this property has the ability to develop it, uh, into whatever is allowed within the county. And what makes the most sense here is to develop this consistent with the property that's in the Village Glen neighborhood. So I think that the, in conclusion, the two things that the council has before it are, are not an approval of the concept plan, not an approval of the drainage plan, those are to come later, but rather, does it make sense to annex this property? And if so, what is the correct zoning? And I respectfully request that you zone this R1. Thank you. Any questions?
Counsel, questions?
I do, I just wanna start out by saying to, to both the developer and the citizens who are here, if they so choose to speak, I'm gonna ask questions that are gonna be playing devil's advocate on both sides, and so please don't take them personally like I'm against it. I haven't completely made up my mind yet, but what I do wanna ask is in regards to what you said about the RE versus R1, wouldn't RE, 'cause the minimum requirement for a lot size is one acre compared to five thousand square feet for an R1? So wouldn't RE create, um, more infiltration for the water to go into the dirt rather than if you have, um, what's the term? Impermeable surfaces that can just drain down as we see the hills, it's gonna go down into Mountain Laurel into that neighborhood? So wouldn't RE capture some of that stormwater as well and help alleviate that issue?
I guess it really just depends on the amount of impervious cover that someone builds. On a, on a one-acre lot, it's entirely possible to put a tennis court and a pool and decking and driveways and storage buildings. So, um, I believe what the developer, uh, developer's engineer looked at was the maximum amount of impervious cover per lot, which I believe is forty percent.
Forty percent is what we estimate for our drainage.
Okay, if you, if you'll come to the mic, give us a name and
Yeah.
address. Hey, and you can like pull your mask off while you're there.
Yes, sir. If you want to.
Connor Odom with Wellborn Engineering Surveying, 631 Water Street. And so for our drainage calculations, we estimate forty percent impervious cover, which is the city's recommendation when doing our design for drainage.
Okay. And looking at the streets, the main drainage is gonna, the main source of the drainage is gonna be that additional street that goes from west to east on this picture right here, right?
So all the water that will flow on that proposed street is gonna be captured by curb inlets and that goes into an underground storm system.
Okay. I guess, sorry, did you have, did you wanna add on to that?
You can go.
I was, I was gonna say, I understand that a road can, can capture some of that. Um, I was thinking about it, and I wanna use the water bottle for an example. If this is empty and it has a hole in it, I can slowly fill it up and that water will empty from it eventually. But the faster I insert water into it, the more it's gonna get full up and it's gonna start overflowing. And I kinda look at that the same way with the road. You may have the drainage there, but the more water that's flowing, it could still overflow and then go down towards Mountain Laurel and the neighborhood there. So how is, how are we gonna alleviate that?
Yes, sir. That's a good question. So as part of being our engineering calculations, we account for all that water coming to the road and the road capacity. So we analyze how much water that road can handle, and we put a series of curb inlets where that water may overtop the crown.
Mm-hmm.
Therefore, it will have adequate capacity.
Are we expecting, do you, in your estimates, do we have any type of overflow percentages on that? Or is it gonna capture a hundred percent of the stormwater that's going in?
Right now, we're capturing a hundred percent
Okay.
is the plan.
Okay.
Do we, do we have, just a second, do we have any, anybody, any, any other speakers on this matter?
Yes, we do.
Okay. If you would, you would come and, and give us to the mic and give us name and address. And Mr. Garcia, we can come back to you.
Sure, no, I wanted to stop there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Paxton, do you have my slides? Thank you.
Margaret, can you pull up the other neighborhood PowerPoint?
Thank you so much. Um, hello, thanks for, uh, taking the time tonight. My name is Jennifer Peterson. Um, I reside at seventeen twenty-eight Mountain Laurel in the Village Glen subdivision. I'm also a former engineer and construction project manager for the Department of Defense, and I served as a master planner for Fort Hood before my family retired and moved here to Kerrville. Um, first, I'd like to acknowledge that as neighbors to this project, we've been pretty emotional about this plan. We're really frustrated about the growing floodplains in our neighborhood and increasing the impact of stormwater issues. But we also need to acknowledge, it's not your job to make us feel better. It's your job to protect us from harm. Uh, when we were notified about the project, we met it as a neighborhood to discuss our concerns and potentially offer some solutions to the city and the developer. Our concerns in a petition with twenty-six signatures from Mountain Laurel, Foothills, Glen West and Valley was presented to the P&amp;Z board and the engineer on the project with some of the pictures I'm about to show you, some of the pictures you were told about. Um, we shared the pictures and videos of the existing stormwater concerns and damage in Village Glen. Let me see. Where do I point this?
Kinda towards the middle. There you go.
There we go. Um, so this is an example of appropriate stormwater drainage on Valley So that's, that's what, that's what city stormwater drainage looks like on Valley Drive. This is downstream from the retention pond that the city approved when the Heights was developed. So this is the result of that drainage structure. Uh, we shared the photos of the retaining walls that our properties have to have in order to manage the hill that's behind our homes. Uh, and we also shared, this is, uh, Foothills and Mountain Laurel. There is a one-hundred-year floodplain behind Foothills, and that wasn't on any of those previous pictures. There are two floodplains that converge, um, on Valley. There's one of, on Valley running north, uh, north to south, and there's one behind Foothills running west to east. So there's two floodplains that feed and head down into Elm Creek Park. And every time there's any sort of water event, this is what it looks like on Foothills. This is just south of one of the road cuts, the proposed road cuts. So after seeing our evidence and hearing our presentation, the P&amp;Z vote board voted to support annexation of the land, but with RE, not R1. Um, so the civil engineer, they're not exactly a disinterested party, uh, told the P&amp;Z board that this design is gonna make things better for Mountain Laurel residents. Um, but according to the EPA Stormwater Calculator, we're gonna get fit that, um, I'm sorry. You can see the, uh, I'm out of order here. These are our retaining walls. This is my backyard. Weird husband for perspective. Um, that is seven linear, or seven vertical feet of retaining wall that we had to have in our backyard to hold the hill that they're gonna be developing. So this is what our, this is what our neighborhood has had to do after the original development in order to keep that hill out of our yards. These are all post-original development.
With the, with your existing retaining wall, do you still get stormwater?
I'm fine.
Okay, you're
Whoever put my retaining wall in did a great job. And that's one of the things about this meeting that I wanna be real sure the council is clear, is that if this gets built the way the developer wants, I'm gonna be just fine, but my neighbors are gonna suffer.
Okay.
This is my neighbor. This is Art and Margaret Cross. You might have heard from them earlier this week. This is what's happening in their backyard. And yes, the developer is gonna divert some stormwater from Art and Margaret's backyard, but it's gonna head down to Valley and east. That street that I just showed you where the kids were inner tubing down the street, that's where the water's going. So they're gonna divert water from us and send it into the floodplain. When you put water in floodplains, floodplains grow. When floodplains grow, more people have to pay for flood insurance, and I really don't see how the city's not gonna end up being responsible for that by allowing more development up the hill from So the council may remember that Kerrville is really no stranger to flooding crises. In two thousand and two, a significant storm event caused the flooding of Quinlan Creek. And in the end, it required the city to purchase with taxpayer dollars twenty-three houses that had been destroyed. We believe that adding even more houses upstream of these current floodplains is gonna have a similar devastating results for current Kerrville residents backing up to this ever-expanding floodplain. Our houses will be destroyed by the floodplain. We would additionally remind the council that although the city closed out its 2050 Plan in 2018, there was no plan submitted by this developer for that area. It was left a donut in the plan. In the 2050 Plan, a lot was designated to stay unannexed residential estates in association with the neighborhood to the north, which was the Heights. And that particular development has been owned by that same developer since 2013. They had plenty of time to make their intentions clear, but either failed to participate or intended to obstruct knowledge of their plans. We have to acknowledge that this property, along with the Heights, both owned by the same company, it's P&amp;L Companies out of Dallas, has a history of failed development. That land has had three different developer owners in the last twelve years, and previous developers have dabbled with these ideas and then abandoned them, as it is evidenced by the existing and degrading road cuts, utility connections and the existing neighborhood layout. Annexation with RE zoning reduces the risk to the adjoining neighborhood when the land is sold to a different developer with R1 zoning, when it becomes clear that this project will fail to produce the intended profitable results. We, as the neighborhood, would like to ask the city to grant the proposed annexation, but humbly submit that the most reasonable course of action would be to zone the property RE, residential estates, to reduce the proposed roofs, driveways and other impermeable surfaces. It would maintain more foliage on the property and reduce future harm to the adjoining and downstream properties. We additionally believe that the RE reduced-density construction exposes the city of Kerrville to less risk of stormwater mitigation crisis in the future.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Do we have any other speakers on this matter?
Derek Seifert?
Uh, yes. My name's Derek Seifert. I live at 302 Aaron Drive. Um, I just wanted to, went forward and, uh, speak actually in favor of zoning this property, R1 versus residential estates. Um, the engineers laid out, you know, quite an extensive, uh, case for, you know, the water drain is just currently running across the property that is obviously going in these people's backyards, that that's gonna be diverted and moved into a different direction. The other
You speak up a little bit.
Sure. Um, the water that they're talking about running into these people's backyards, um, that's going to be diverted with the road and with the development. So currently, if nothing's done, it's gonna be just like that. If, if there's residential estates that are put in, there's still gonna be a road put in there to divert the water, um, that is, which will alleviate these, uh, property owners' current situation. My biggest, uh, reasoning for R1 zoning is because the city has a humongous lack of lot inventory for residential lots. So if you do this R1, you're gonna have four hundred to six hundred thousand dollar houses there. That's in great demand for the city. You know, that, that's what everyone is looking for here. If you zone that residential states, those houses are gonna be six hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars. Okay? There's, you know, demand for that, like there's demand for everything. But right now, there's a very big lack in R1 lots in the city itself. So I'm really here for more of just a practical, um, need for what the city is needing, which is R1 lots, to build new houses to service current and future residents of Kerrville at, you know, a reasonably affordable price, you know? So if you were to go with residential states here, it's gonna price everyone out that's coming in here, you know, that's, that's looking for these houses. You know, there's plenty of builders that are looking for R1 lots to build spec homes on. There's plenty of spec homes around town that are already under contract, and there's not even any foundations for it because there's such a demand for price points between, call it three seventy-five and five fifty, you know? And that's what you'll get when you get R1 on this property. But when you do residential state, you're gonna get six hundred, eight hundred thousand dollar houses, you know? And that's just not gonna serve the needs of what the city is looking for. I mean, we had, you, y'all had meetings earlier about tax base and, and property taxes and things like that to accommodate, uh, you know, some of the plans for stuff. And this is a solution to that, in my opinion, you know, just more R1 lots. And I would also say that the people that are most opposed to R1 live in R1. They came to Kerrville and bought They came to Kerrville and bought R1 houses, you know? They, you know, all the people that, their backyards go against that property, their neighbor to the right and to the left and across the street in front of them, R1. So I, I find it not beneficial to the city to look at this and say, okay, there's people that live in R1, but they don't want R1 next to them. They want residential states. And I would also argue that they probably don't want anything there, they're preferred to have some kind of drainage put in and just leave it natural, but that's just, you know, not feasible. And so I would just say that, you know, from what the city needs, in my opinion, is R1 lots to supply.
And sir, did you say that you do or do not live with, in like, in that neighborhood there?
I do not live in that neighborhood, I live at 302 Aaron, which is probably two or three miles.
Right, okay, thank you.
Do we have any other speakers?
Philip Copan, and he is on Zoom.
Okay, go ahead.
Ms. Francina, is Mr. Copan on the line?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, hi, I'm, I'm at home with Omicron, so there you go. Well firstly, I've lived at Mountain Laurel for 15 years. The gentleman's comments last, he doesn't live in the area, he doesn't know the way the water's going, and we know the way it's going. Jenna's already shown you that. The one slide that she showed you with the waterfall running there, most of that water comes from elsewhere and it runs at the back of my home. The city, when it did its little annexation agreement with Village Glen, and I believe the annexation agreement is the same as the one that you've offered similar trails. It says in there that, it, you know, on page three, it says the city will manage the roads and the drainage. Maintain the roads and the drainage. Well, whoever did the engineering with our developer, obviously, didn't do the drainage correctly. And since then, the city has done very little to do the drainage. In fact, the ditch at the back of my house has been a bone of contention for several years now. The city, I believe, clears both ends, but not the middle, and there's an issue with gaining access. Because it's at the, the back of our neighbors on Foothills, who are the ones on the flood plain. So when you're saying you're going to maintain and manage this, there, as Jenna said, you have a risk. And the city has a risk, and I as a taxpayer have a risk. And yes, back in 2014, and as Jenna said, the Heights of Kerrville subdivision has had a storied past, to say the least. The P and L, which is short for P and L, Profit and Loss, they are an asset manager out of Dallas. And they, they focus on special assets with a variety of problems and challenges, it's on their website. Their acquisition criteria are, we are not developers, but we do reposition existing properties. We do not buy stabilized properties trading at high multiples, we do buy assets challenged by management, location, tenancy, bankruptcy, litigation, environmental and or market dislocation issues. And they also rescue capital as well. They are not anybody from our area, and they're here to make money, ladies and gentlemen. I have no problem with making money, but this is a flawed project, and it does not fit in well with the neighborhood. And back when they purchased the property in 2013, the next year, they applied to turn the whole of the Heights. From RE to R1, they wanted the whole project as R1. And if anybody's seen the Heights, you know, it requires substantial grading, substantial, let's say it's topologically channeled, it's challenged. So all I ask is that you take a real look at how this is going to affect, they're just moving the water downstream to an already flooded area. So as I said, the city's worked with our developer in Village Glen and have not fulfilled their part of the act where they're managing the drainage in our area. So all I ask is you reassess from the, the application from R1 to RE, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Francina, did you state that you did have two more speakers?
We have two more speakers, George Verudy.
George Verudy, 1616 Glen Road, that would be the house where all this water is now going to drain to. So first, first thing is, you're really just talking about annexation, so all the rest of this, as they've said, really is supposed to come up later. And as Mr. Richards pointed out, this is a donut hole, which, as the city attorney can help us understand, should never have been allowed to exist in the first place. Because state law prohibits it from happening. When they annexed the Heights, it should not have been allowed to leave a donut hole. So I believe you should be annexing this property, period. Okay, now, as far as R1, RE, I don't really have a dog in the fight, don't particularly care. The, to the extent that the water is, drainage is bad on Mountain Laurel, I believe, based on what little bit I know, understand, their situation is going to be improved. I happen to live at the corner of Valley and Glen, where all this drainage has been going since the Heights was built. And I can tell you that, as one of the previous speakers pointed out, the flood plain increases when you run more water down there. In 2011, my property was put, the back half of it was put in the flood plain, whereas it wasn't prior to that. That's basically caused by those drainage retention ponds. I also understand that the, when the Heights were built and those detention drainage things were put in place, there was a capacity of maximum on them. And as I understand it, the Heights already has that capacity, not built out maybe, but the lots are already kind of outlined, if you will. So adding more water to those, which is what this development is planning to do, only increases that beyond its capacity, which is going to affect me directly. Now, again, you're, you just have an annexation in front of you. I would recommend pass the annexation, I don't really care which zoning you use for it. But I would hope that council stays on top of the drainage that's created by any development that occurs on this land. And I don't have particular faith in that happening, seeing as how the original drainage from the Heights actually made things worse downstream. So I would urge you to be very strict in the potential development in the future, but I would urge you to annex the property that's in front of you. Thanks.
Mr. Verudy. I just, I just wanted to clarify that the ordinance that's presented to us annex, both annexes a property and then also establishes a zoning for the property.
Yeah, I understand that, and so like I said a couple of times, I don't care which zoning you use, because I think it's somewhat irrelevant. Ultimate decision about drainage is, is going to be caused or affected more by the road than the size of the lot. And so you guys can do whichever way you want, I just feel like you should annex the property. It's kind of a flip a coin thing, as far as I'm concerned. As far as which zoning you choose, I don't have a dog in that fight as well, I guess all I'm saying.
Can I interrupt here?
What?
Another speaker wants to speak.
Do we have another speaker?
Mrs. Philip, yes, hello, Mr. Verudy.
Wait, just a second.
Ms. Francina, you'll need to mute.
We have Bruce Stricki.
Oh, okay. Okay, Bruce, go ahead. Okay, let's move on, do we have any speakers in the council chambers?
I would like to see what that other speaker has.
Bruce Stricki, 615 Earl Garrett Street.
Okay, go ahead.
I've had a long history with this property and, and know quite a bit about it. In fact, the city engineer at the time that the Heights was approved was named Mike Welborn. And when you look at the, the water maps that Mr. Richards presented, you'll notice the blue map that he showed shows that the water actually was planned. It, it, because of, historically, this is where it always went. It went down toward Mountain Laurel, and the flood plain that the folks are talking about between Mountain Laurel and Valley Street, this has been a longstanding problem that started years before the Heights, but was not addressed by the Heights. And, and so, just a little history. The, if we, it, I, while I agree with Mr. Verudy, we should annex this product, property, we should never leave a donut hole. The worst case of leaving it in the county is, is that right now, it would be in the county and not have access to central utilities. And so that would lead it to five acre minimums, leaving three lots back there. I know that there are some zoning issues with that, and so I don't propose that, I'm just pointing out that there would be less lots if it stayed in the county than it would if it came in the city. What I really wanted to bring up is, in looking back in the historical documents and, and the exhibits that were presented earlier this evening, I have a hybrid thought. There's, there's Lot 61 along Coronado, which on the, the exhibit that Drew Paxton presented, shows a hatched area of 1.499 acres. And a blue area of 0.65 acres. It, it makes sense to zone those R1 with the annexation. Those were always intended to be R1 lots, in fact, when the height was originally built, taps were put in for four lots. And, and, but those taps could not be connected to an active sewer system at the time. And so that's why it was one lot instead. So doing that eastern portion, the portion entirely east of Coronado as R1 with the annexation, makes total sense. And, and those would, would be our, you know, typically R1 that we might see. And, and then in the, in the rest of the area that's to be annexed, the, what is it, it's 15.925 acres. And 0.274 acre, oh, I'm sorry, and, and it's 15 point, it's just one area. All the area that's west of Coronado, 15.925 acres, some of that could be R1, but it really ought to be annexed as RE. And then when we see the subdivision plan and the drainage plan and everything from the developer and the engineer, at that time, it makes sense, if they can mitigate the issues, to allow a higher density. But since we don't know what that is, and it's not really appropriate for us to address it today, we should respect the citizens of Kerrville, who are already citizens. The folks who are already in the city limits, who are very concerned about this, and give them the highest level of regard when we don't know how this is going to be developed in the future. And so I believe that if we annex the portion east of Coronado as R1, and annex the portion west of Coronado as RE. We respect our citizens and allow the developer to move forward and bring a plan that may be acceptable to the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers on this matter? 8:07, we're out of the public hearing. Counsel, what do you want to do with this one?
I'd like to just make a couple of comments. I've really lost sleep over this, and I'm sure I'm.
You'd like what?
I said I've lost sleep over this.
Yeah.
And I know I'm not the only one. And the question, as I've looked at both sides and understand everybody and what they're saying, and have gone over and over and over this, the question that I have to ask is what's best for Kerrville? Not what's best for me, not what's best for a developer or an individual citizen, it's what's best for the city. And, and the first thing that comes up is annexation is, would be the absolute best thing for the city. And somehow, I feel the drainage has got pulled into this. It's not really the issue on our plate, it's not the issue we have to make a decision on today. It is important, it's there, it's been there for a long time, and it does need to be taken into consideration. Either way, I have to agree with, to a certain extent here, with, with Mr. Verudy that, you know, we need to annex. And then what we do after that is, is another, is another decision. But it does take care of our infill housing, it will bring tax dollars to the city, we can close up that donut hole, donut hole with control and oversight regulations. Staff has recommended R1, and I, I trust staff, they're professionals, this is what they do for a living, and looking at that, I, I have to put my trust in them. The developer, I, I have to give him credit, I think that he was not, didn't have to come forth with a plat, he didn't have to come forth with a drainage plan. So I appreciate that he has done that at this point. R1 would be consistent with Village Glen, and it's a great neighborhood. It'd be the same size lots, compatible in size, dials of houses, consistent with the neighborhood, and it meets the 2050 plan. And as the gentleman over here said, we need that kind of housing. It's not workforce as we normally think of workforce, but it's housing that is needed, and so I think we need to look at that. I, I'm, I'm very conflicted, it, it's, it's, it's a hard decision. And when, but when I go back to say what's best for the city of Kerrville right now, I think we need to get it annexed. I think we need to have controls and regulations and oversight, and I think that, I think I would have to go with R1. I just, I just feel that right now, that's where we would, would be the best solution for the city.
Counsel, other comments or questions?
Yappiken did have one more comment he wanted to make.
One more comment?
Yes. Mr. Richards?
Just briefly, the, the application is a voluntary application for annexation. And the developer has built a model around these 44 lots and, and this particular design. And so I just wanted to point out that council shouldn't assume that if, if it was, if you choose to annex it and zone it RE, that the project is going to move forward. I can't say that it will, and I can't say that it'll look like that if it did. What, what the developer has plans to do is if this is annexed and zoned R1, is to build that according to the concept that was presented, if that makes sense.
Let me say, this is one that I've been very conflicted on as well, because I know people on Mountain Laurel, I know what they faced with stormwater. But it looks like there's not a good, there's not a good answer to that at this point. But here, taking care of this donut hole, doing R1 with the drainage that's proposed, I really trust that helps the folks on Mountain Laurel. And I think it will. So, we, we have a motion?
Is the, our drainage master plan, does it identify this area?
This isn't a question to the decision, it's just a question that came.
Yes, we evaluated all the areas, this was not one of the ones that came up, actually downstream of it. There is a, there's, there's a section of, of drainage that this flows into that was identified in the master plan.
Now, if the water is redirected into that retention pond, the retention pond is sufficient to handle that redirected water?
We'll, we'll evaluate that, once we get the plans in, we, we need to see how the. We'll, we'll evaluate that. Once we get the plans in, we, we need to see how big the rooftops are. We need to see a whole lot more information than what we have presented here tonight to verify that yes, it will, but that's the intention.
But if, if, if engineering determines that the additional flow into that drainage channel as it exists is not sufficient, then there will have to be other mitigations done.
That is correct. Yes, ma'am, they will have to. The, the post-development can't exceed the pre, the pre-development flow. And so, yes, we would make them add additional detention if that was the case.
Thank you. All right, if there are no other questions or comments, uh, is there a motion on this matter?
I just have a final comment. Uh, I too, lost a lot of sleep over this one, council member. I feel a little bit differently, though. Uh, I tend to agree with what a speaker, uh, Mr. Stricki said about zoning, about annex. First of all, question about annexing, there's two questions here. Do we annex it? Yes or no? And then what do we zone it? We need to annex it. That's a yes. What do we zone it as? I tend to agree with RE for now. I think that getting some more information, um, and tending to agree with what Mr. Stricki said, uh, would be good. I would just, if we were to do it, I would actually recommend we don't annex, um, it, what he said, the zero point sixty-one. I would just say we would do it RE, similar to what he was saying, uh, and pass it that way. This did also go through planning and zoning. They had two meetings on it. One meeting, they weren't really satisfied with the information, and there were citizens who did come to speak, and they expressed their concerns. And P and Z wasn't satisfied enough to move forward with it, and so that's why they asked, um, the developer and the citizens to meet and see if they could come to some common ground. And afterwards, it still seemed that planning and zoning was satisfied with zoning it RE instead of R1. And so I think seeing the level of, uh, information that they got and the level of communication and all the information that they did and research that they did and they got, after two meetings, they still pl- uh, zoned it or recommended a zoning of RE. And so that would be my recommendation to counsel to consider doing that, um, and I'm open to rezoning it later after we annexed it and should the developer, whoever, come towards counsel and say, or towards the city and say, this is a more detailed plan of what we would like to do. So with, with that, I guess we can move to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash oh three, but with a zoning of residential estates RE. That'd be my motion.
Okay, there is a motion. Is there a second? If the motion fails, uh, for lack of a second, is there a motion to move forward with ordinance as presented?
I will make that motion to move, uh, forward with ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash oh three, annexing and R1 for zoning.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All right, all in favor of that motion, let it be known by the raised hand. And there are three all opposed by a black sign, and it's two, and it passes three to two.
Thank you, and thank y'all.
Okay. Okay, let's go to six B. Ms. McElhanan?
Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash zero four, an ordinance annexing and annexing a tract of land into the corporate limits of the city of Kerrville, Texas, such property making up six point zero acres and generally located southeast of and adjacent to the Holdsworth Drive, and a portion of which connects to Pasco Avenue North, or commonly known as two fifty-three Holdsworth Drive. Such property, more specifically described in the ordinance, is being located within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of and adjacent to the city limits, adopting the service agreement establishing the zoning for the annexed property as a multifamily residential R3 zoning district and providing other matters relating to the subject.
Thank you, Mr. Paxton.
This is a request for annexation in R3 multifamily zoning. Uh, this is a property that council has seen before. Uh, came before council last year for a resolution of support for a TDHCA tax credit. Uh, they were awarded that tax credit, and of course, now moving forward with that project, uh, first step being annexation and zoning. Uh, the request is consistent with the Kerrville 2050 comprehensive plan. It's part of the strategic catalyst area surrounding the sports complex, um, Harper Road and Holdsworth Drive. Planning and zoning commission did recommend it with a unanimous vote on December second. I'd be pleased to answer any questions before or after the public hearing. I do believe the applicant representative is on the phone call.
All right. Counsel, any questions on this one?
Is, so the property that's outlined in your presentation here, that's only, is that one parcel or is that a portion of the parcel?
It's a portion of two parcels.
Okay.
Um, it, it is a portion of, let me get this map here. There is a larger piece that is outside the city limits.
Yeah.
Um, they have contracted and purchased only a portion of that, uh, being this six acres.
This is all that they own?
This is all that they own, that's correct. There will still be a remainder tract that is outside the city limits.
To the west of that or northwest drive?
Northwest and north, yes.
Right, okay.
And these, this is multifamily units, tax assisted, directed toward lower income families?
That is correct. And if I'm not mistaken, there is not an age limit on this one.
Yeah, okay, okay. All right. Okay, uh, questions, counsel?
And help, remind me, how many units again do we know? Did they?
Yeah, they did.
Thirty-six. Thirty-six, that's right, yes, that's what it was.
All right, eight nineteen, uh, the peer, uh, public hearing is open. Do we have anybody to speak to this matter?
Ms. Meismer and Ms. Francina?
We have two speakers on the line.
We don't have everybody?
Two, two.
Two on the.
Ms. Francina, go ahead.
George Veruti?
George Veruti, sixteen sixteen Glen Road. Sorry to keep bothering you. You guys have a lot of agenda items that actually hit close to home. So this particular plot, um, track, I, I, I would be for annexation. I just got questions about, um, is there not, I mean, the access to this apartment is only going to be on to Pasco? Is, is that correct? And, um, if so, um, why? I guess the, along Holdsworth, that's a city-owned property. Why aren't we having them access there? And the reason that matters is because Pasco is already an overused, it used to be a neighborhood road, is now being used as a kind of a major thoroughfare cut through. And if you've come out of Pasco and Holdsworth before and tried to make a left, which everybody tries to do, uh, you'll understand that's not particularly the best thing to do. And, um, I, I would urge you not to have thirty-six units being, coming out onto Pasco and encouraging them to make that same thing unless you're going to control that intersection of Pasco and Holdsworth. I, I think that's pretty much all my things. If, if somebody could answer the question about i- is this apartment going to have access to Holdsworth or is it going to be directed only to Pasco? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a staff response?
April Aengstrom?
Hello, my name is April Aengstrom. I'm with, uh, the Development Group, Arone Property Group, and I'm the developer on this deal. George, to answer your question, we are going to be adding site access on Holdsworth Drive.
And, and is that in addition to Pasco?
It is, yes.
Okay.
So everything.
And also, um, I just wanted to note, too, that we have a, um, a meeting with our architects, engineer, and the planning staff on, I believe, February second, um, just to, just to go over everything in its entirety.
Okay.
So is everything that's to the, to the north there, is, is that all, is that all public, um, right of way or?
Yes.
Okay. There's no landowner in between?
Portion of that may be LCRA.
Okay.
I don't know where that overlap is exactly this location, but it's either LCRA easement or Holdsworth right of way.
Okay.
So this will come back to us with better ac- showing another access and that.
That's just the shape of what they own, I think.
Yeah, this is just the outline and the initial.
We can work with the developer and see if we can get a site plan early to include in this second reading. Uh, it would not be tied to that, um, because it is just standard R3 zoning, but we can see if we can present that.
But as far as, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry. I was just going to say that we definitely have preliminary site plans. But again, we have that meeting scheduled with the planning department, and at that point, our architects and engineers can, um, work to refine our current site plan. But, yeah, we definitely have one, um, still preliminary at this time.
There's no restriction that we know of on Holdsworth with text dot as, for being able to put another opening there.
There are some restrictions, uh, but I believe that is included in this, that this is allowed here.
Allowed here, okay, okay.
Okay, if there are no other, no other speakers, uh, it's eight twenty-four. I would just like to say that, um, you know, this is a good, experienced company out of Kansas that's done these kind of units all over Texas and the Midwest. When they came with us, when, when they wanted support as they were going for their, their, uh, application, uh, they gave us a great presentation. And these are nice-looking facilities, and where they have done other facilities, they've been kept well, well-managed. And I just want to say, we desperately need more housing for low-income families. And, and this doesn't completely fill the bill, but it helps us. All right, do we have a motion on this matter?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero four. I'll second that.
All right, we got a motion second. All in favor, if you'd let me know by the upraised hand. Okay, and it passes unanimously. All right, six C, um, if you'll read that in for us, Ms. McElhanan?
Ordinance number twenty twenty-two zero five. An ordinance annexing two tracts of land plus an adjacent public right of way that exists as part of Lehman Drive into the corporate limits of the city of Kerrville, Texas. Such property making up approximately one hundred and sixty-eight point eight four acres and generally located along the west and southwest borders of the Regional Medical Center. Such property, more specifically described in this ordinance, is being located within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city and adjacent to the city limits, adopting the service agreement establishing the zoning for the annexed property as agriculture, AG, and public and institutional PI zoning districts, and providing other matters relating to the subject. We do have three representatives from Peterson here.
Okay, all right. Mr. Paxton, before you present this, uh, Mr. Hoppe, is he getting time and a half for this for tonight?
As long as his voice holds out.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Mayor. This is another annexation request. Um, here's a map of the zoning districts that you can see. Uh, it is backing up to Peterson Hospital Zone PI. And here's a, an exhibit showing the zoning request. The blue is going to be zoned ag as a placeholder until the, uh, Peterson Regional Medical Center finishes their master plan. They wanted to leave this as a placeholder. The red portion is zoned PI, or is requesting zoning PI. That is their first immediate phase. Uh, they are going to have a need for additional parking, and they're going to, um, include a parking lot there and a re-alignment of Lehman, Leonard, and Rimrock at that intersection. Uh, this is also annexing a portion of Lehman and Rimrock, so the city limits are consistent along that roadway. Now, the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan as part of the strategic catalyst area surrounding the hospital. Be pleased to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
Okay. Counsel, questions about this one? All right, at eight twenty-seven, we're going to the public hearing. Do we have a speaker to this matter?
Corey Edmondson?
Hi, my name's Corey Edmondson at forty-two twelve Stone Creek Circle, uh, here in Kerrville. And as representative of Peterson, President and CEO, uh, we are requesting this annexation. Peterson continues to grow, uh, as an organization, and we are landlocked. And the acquisition of this property and our, uh, current, uh, project that we have going on, where we'll be expanding and building a new ambulatory surgery center, we'll be taking parking away from, uh, the existing prop- the existing, uh, plat of where Peterson is. And this property will allow us to expand and do parking back here. So that's the initial, uh, proposal, uh, for this property, so.
Okay, okay.
Simple as that.
Thank you. Thank you for patiently waiting. Do, do we have, do we have other speakers?
Joe or Greg, did y'all want to speak?
They're more than welcome to speak.
Well, there you go.
I have nothing further to add, but happy to answer any questions that counsel may have.
All right. Mr. Schrader, same?
Same.
Okay. Um, so just quick clarification. The new surgery center will take some of the parking space in the front. And you're expanding surgery, uh, surgery services. Right, okay. So this initially would be for, for parking. Now, just a couple of questions. Peterson Health is now serving nine counties?
Served nine counties.
And, and how many sites?
We have twelve rooftops serving the region.
Okay.
Not, it's not just Kirk County, but outside of Kirk County.
Bernie Banderas, Fredericksburg. Okay, all right. Okay. If there are no further speakers, we're out of the public hearing at eight twenty-nine. Any other questions, counsel, on this matter?
I don't have questions. I just, uh, wanted to say that, uh, Mr. Edmondson had told me on my first meeting with him, uh, when he got here, that he wanted to make this a surgery destination place, and I think you're on your way. This is exciting.
Mayor, if I may, I did want to in, add to that. Uh, this does include a parcel that will be a holdout. Uh, it is a separate owner. Um, you, you do have a finding in your ordinance that shows that annexing around this separate parcel is obviously in the interest of the city, um, given the project. Because it is a separate owner, it could not be included in this unless that owner made a separate petition.
Does the owner want to be annexed?
I have not had that conversation with the owner at this time.
Now, does this put us in a donut hole situation?
It, it would be a donut hole, and again, in your ordinance, you'll have that separate finding that describes that there is a donut hole, and counsel has acknowledged the, the reason for that.
Right, and that's authorized by state law. There's a specific provision within the annexation law of, um, local government code that says if you create a donut hole, which you can do, you, you all just have to make a finding that that's in the public interest. And so that, you know, these ordinances all look the same at times, zoning, just like the CUPs, but there is a separate section, uh, three that addresses that issue.
Now, as we look forward, is that donut hole likely to cause us issues?
Now, this is very common when you have a property owner that continues to, uh, desire to live on an estate where they've, uh, maintained, uh, their residence, but they've sold off the rest of their estate. You know, at some point in time, I could see that property owner or their heirs potentially wanting to, um, divest themselves of that property.
Okay.
All right, do we hear a motion?
I move that we approve ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash oh five.
Second.
All right, we got a motion second. All in favor, if you'd like it be known by the raised hands, and it passes unanimously. And we wish you well. Ms. McElhanan, six D, please.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash zero six, an ordinance in Mini Chapter sixty of the Code of Ordinances City of Kerrville, Texas. Such chapter more commonly known as the City Zoning Code. By changing the zoning to multiple lots along Washington Street and between Barnett Street and North, said lots more commonly known as five hundred, five oh four, five oh eight, five twelve, six oh two, six oh four, six oh eight, six sixteen, six twenty-four, and six twenty-five Washington Street and eight seventeen Barnett Street. Within the city of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, from a residential transition zoning district RT to a public and institutional zoning district PI, and providing other matters relating to the subject. We don't have any citizen speakers sign up, however, this is a public hearing.
Okay, Mr. Paxton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request to change the zoning from RT to PI, public and institutional. As we went through the zoning code rewrite, um, and the zoning map, uh, we did establish the majority of the larger campus and larger churches into that public and. the majority of the larger campus and larger churches into that public and institutional district. I don't have a rhyme or reason why we left this one out other than it was part of that RT district, which does serve as a pretty substantial district between downtown and the adjacent neighborhoods. Given that, the church's future development plans, they felt that PI would be a better fit for what they were doing. And the regulations slightly modified gave them a little bit better opportunities as they continue to grow. This is not the entire church property, but again, their core campus, so that they weren't kind of a misfit within that PI zoning as well. It is consistent with the Kerrville twenty fifty plan and a future land use plan because it is that public and institutional use. It is an existing church and the Planning Commission recommended approval on December second.
Let me ask you, so does the church own all those properties across the street?
That is correct.
Including the law office? Well, that's all right.
They own these properties directly across the street. They do own a couple of properties behind them, but they did not include that in this.
Okay.
But they did not go north of Washington Street.
Yeah, okay.
Drew, it says that you mailed out thirty letters on eleven sixteen. Did you get any responses from those?
I had several phone calls, but I did not get any written response. Just some of the adjacent property owners on Earl Garrett wanted to see, one, if we had any specific future plans that the church had submitted, which they have not at this time. And two, just kind of trying to see what that rhyme or reason was and what the discussion was gonna be prior to the Planning Commission.
And did you have any objections?
No objections.
Okay.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Paxton?
No, just what's, what are they looking at doing that's, that won't be able to do right now?
Like I said, I don't have, didn't have their master plan. They haven't submitted anything at this time. But as they were going through that process with their committees, this was one of the steps that they felt they needed to take.
Okay.
Okay. Eight thirty-five, the public hearing is open. Do we know of any speakers?
May I remind the Zoom callers, if you're on the landline telephone, star nine to raise your hand or just hit the participant button. Ms. Francina and Ms. Meismer, are there anyone?
No, no one's out there anymore.
Okay.
Okay.
You don't have any? No, ma'am.
Eight thirty-five, eight thirty-six, the public hearing is closed. Okay, do we have a motion on this matter?
I move that we approve ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash oh six. I'll second.
All right, we got a motion second. All in favor, if you'd let me know by the upraised hand, and it carries unanimously. I didn't wanna vote against a Baptist church. Okay, ordinance number twenty twenty-two oh two, Ms. McLanahan.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash zero two. An ordinance amending chapter sixty of the ordinance of the city of Kerrville, Texas. Such chapter more commonly known as the City Zoning Code by admitting said code to include adding definitions, revising the requirement for variances, requiring signs for notification, and other amendments provided herein. Providing the cumulative clause providing for separability, providing an effective date, ordering publication, and providing other matters relating to the subject. We do not have any speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Okay, okay. Now, who, who from the staff is gonna go over this for us?
It's second reading, right?
First reading.
Oh, it's first reading.
First reading. This has come before council before. We did a brief workshop looking at the topics that staff, council, and the Planning Commission had identified that we wanted to review and update. Went to two readings with, or two hearings with the Planning Commission just to get some final details. I'll go through some of those. Of course, there is more detail in the ordinance itself, but I'll just kind of roll through these. If you have any questions, just stop me as we go along. We did look at short-term rentals. One of the big things that we wanted to point out was changing the, removing the bedroom count on the short-term rental and actually going to a maximum occupancy number. And this is to better align with the building codes. The building codes don't look at the number of bedrooms, but rather the number of occupants for it to be determined between a short-term rental or a hotel or motel. So just to maintain that consistency between those two codes.
Will that affect the, how we calculate our parking as well or no?
Parking will still be based on the bedroom count, but there will not be a maximum bedroom count as the previous definition allowed for. Again, we are gonna be looking at adding that local contact as a requirement, as one of the conditions. And we are also, it'll be a separate ordinance, but Planning Commission did recommend that we look at a license or an annual permit. So that we do see these on a, even though they get their conditional use permit for the zoning entitlement, they're recommended that we look at another license to come back as an annual permit so that we can touch base with these owners and operators on a more regular basis.
But at this time, no fee with that license?
At this time, that is not a requirement. That was just a recommendation. So that'll come as a separate ordinance, because that is not gonna be in the zoning code.
Would there be an inspection process in order to get that permit?
I don't know yet. We haven't, we haven't fully vetted that portion of it. I know for sure we'll look at the parking as part of that inspection, because that's part of the CUP. As far as a building inspection, we haven't determined that yet. That'll come through chapter thirty, business license. Yeah, it'll come as a separate ordinance, but that was part of planning and zoning's recommendation. Have a section that referenced adjacent properties with different zoning recommending removal of that. The more staff have kind of dug into this section of the code that was a carryover, more old code, old code, really determined that it just, in most cases that we've come up with, it doesn't make sense. If the benefit of one use to another property makes sense, then nine times out of ten, so should rezoning and replating so that it is part of that property. Based on some recent legislative changes, we are updating the variance findings. Previous state law did not allow any financial finding to be considered for a variance. New state law does allow that now, so we are adding that to that.
Say that again?
If you look in your, your ordinance.
Page four.
Page four. State legislature added that a financial cost greater than fifty percent of the appraised value can be deemed a finding for a hardship towards a variance to vary the development regulations of the zoning code. Whereas previously, financials could not be considered.
But I mean, it gives you more flexibility, but you still got the land uses issue and the, you know, the interest and.
That is correct. The finances is not the only hardship. There are other hardships that would still have to be identified. But it allows that to be part of that equation and to be considered.
I don't, I don't wanna take up too much time, but just let me say, in regard to that issue of the ZBA considering this, that's just another example of our citizen involvement on these committees that, I mean, most of the time, something's gone before a citizens committee before it comes to us. And it just, it worked right.
Yes. One of the recommendations coming out of Planning Commission was to consider posting a property for public hearings. Many communities around the country do this, around the state, around the region, but actually putting some sort of sign, I say more akin to, you know, a small real estate sign, so it's not distracting. But to identify to passerby is that there is a public, an upcoming public hearing. And we've had a number of discussions at the Planning Commission and council. Adjacent property owner didn't get the notice within two hundred feet, but they're the next block over, further down that block. And this would just help notify the public that something's coming.
I didn't see size indicated. It seemed like it's important to say this size sign with this size print.
The sign code does have a section that relates to government signs, so there will be a maximum size. As far as lettering size, we have not gone to that detail. Obviously, the point is to show that there is an upcoming public hearing, but we can't put too much information on it to distract the driver or passerby. But certainly wanna give notice, and if they need to stop and look in more detail, we'll get there. Most likely, it'll be kind of a generic notification. There's a public hearing. Contact the city or city website or the posted agendas for further detail.
Just from an operational standpoint, those are staff that are posting these signs.
I was gonna say, and paid for by the city and staff.
That's right. Yeah, and we'll just rotate them to new properties. It's just a notification basically to go check the website.
This is good.
Shipping containers, we've had, had a couple of requests for shipping containers. And looking at other ordinances, it's kind of all over the place on what different communities do to, to allow them or prohibit them. So working with Planning Commission, I've obviously started by adding a definition. This is consistent with the building code. And the current regulations, the residential districts are silent to shipping containers. So if they are considered as part of a structure, they would be allowed, and we are not allowed to regulate what those materials are. So if, if they can meet the building code, then they can use it on a residential property, on the current regulations. Industrial and the airport district are also currently allowed. The primary request that we received was in public and institutional to include that. So as we discussed this with the Planning Commission, one of the, the big things they wanted to look at was removing the residential districts from being allowed for shipping containers, just 'cause they're, although we can't regulate the specific building material, these as a separate use, we can regulate that. Obviously, you can build a, you know, a garden shed that's made out of our panel and metal material that looks very similar. But the way these are kind of moved in and out and not as permanent as building a structure.
What about the, what about temporary for remodeling and?
Under a building permit, we do allow them. I don't remember the timeframe, but if someone's moving into a property, there is some allowance for some temporary, you know, the pods and the different style of temporary structures. But those are temporary, and I believe, believe under the building code, it's maximum of thirty days, so that they can't have that come and go.
What's the cost for that permit?
That does not require a permit.
Well, I mean.
But if you had a, if you have a building permit, you're allowed to have a shipping container throughout the entirety of the permit.
Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to know.
So wait, to get the permit, though, they won't pay a fee?
The building permit.
The, the building permit would have a fee, yes.
That's, that's why I was asking. So what's the fee for that permit?
Depends on the permit.
It's the overall building permit fee.
It just follows with the permit.
There's not a separate permit or fee for the shipping container specifically.
Right, so like, we got our, we got our home remodeled and it took six months, so it went with that.
During the duration of that permit and the inspection process. And then when that certificate of occupancy is issued for the actual building, that, that structure needs to be moved offsite. Okay, that makes sense. I thought you were gonna require them to get a separate permit for that.
As a part of that original building.
Okay.
And of course, including this in the public and institutional district and with their recommended set of requirements. That they be on a campus with a minimum of five acres, setback behind the front wall of the adjacent structure. Minimum of a hundred feet from any residential zoning district. The container would be required to be screened or color matched to adjacent buildings, permanently anchored as per the building code. And that, again, licensed contractors can use them temporarily with the authorized building permit in conjunction with that construction project. And here's a larger view of the zoning map, just to get an idea of where that public and institutional, that's that kind of cyan color on your screen. So we are looking at the larger properties where it is more of a campus feel and those shipping containers can be placed less impactful than on a smaller property.
What'd you call that color?
Cyan. Light blue. So one of the primary requests was from Shriner University. In that lower picture, they actually do have one located right here. So this is, this one sets back about a hundred to a hundred and fifty feet off of Main Street, next to one of the baseball dugouts. Color matched, they do, they would like to put some striping and signage on it to actually make it look like the dugout. But it was a faster, less expensive project for them rather than adding on to the dugout for some of their equipment storage. So as compared to some of the other ones that we've seen, obviously, that one's pretty low impact as far as the location and being set back so far. The building height in PI District, I know the council members that were present through the zoning code, we had a lot of discussion on building heights and how the building height may increase as they set back further from residential property. That section did not get carried over into the public and institutional once we kind of went through that final iteration. So it actually had a maximum height of thirty-five feet across the board. One of the projects we're looking at for the hospital, current hospital is above thirty-five feet, as are most of the buildings on campus. So I wanted to make sure we get that fit corrected ahead of their project. Traffic impact analysis, we talked about this a lot with the subdivision code. Big question was how does that carry over to existing platted projects where they're getting into their zoning entitlements? Since the traffic impact analysis is based on land use, and a lot of our zoning requests come in without a specific project in mind, the planned development district and the mixed use both require a concept plan identifying those particular land uses. So those would have enough information to at least start that worksheet process and identify if a full traffic analysis would be required.
Before we approve a zoning change?
It would be part of that. You hear me talk about the impact on the thoroughfare, just very generally now, once we have this kind of information, we can get it a lot deeper. Like any traffic impact analysis, they would be required to make those upgrades if there is an impact discovered.
So before someone zones, if, if they're planning a big project, they may already be in on engineering costs to do a full?
Potentially. The worksheet. So this is just that preliminary worksheet.
Right, but if the worksheet indicates that.
Yes.
They have to go that next step.
Yeah, before they can go on to building permit, they'll have to do the next engineering analysis.
But not for, not for zoning requests?
Not for the zoning. So it'd just be the worksheet that's required for zoning.
Okay.
Yep. Identifying that future need as they move through the project. One of the things we've found that we left out of the zoning code rewrite was our conditions on garage sales. Just pulling from the old code, there is a three-day maximum, four per year. I just wanted to bring that back into the code. We don't require a separate permit. We don't require a license.
Why, but that's fun to monitor.
But it, it helps us mitigate if we have someone more or less running a retail shop out of their garage. And doing a daily use is really the intent there.
And there's no charge for that?
That, that's correct. There's, there's not even a permit. So we just established the rules so that if there is a problem, we have something to come back to.
If there's a perpetual growth.
Correct. We haven't any complaints. Our staff just noticed that it was missing, so. RV parks, we've had a lot of discussion with different RV parks and proprietors and trying to really get a better feel for how RV parks are treated versus a single RV on a single lot, whether it's residential or non-residential. So kind of went through and just cleaned up some of that language from the previous code. Updated the RV park section, clarified that in an RV park, there is no length of stay for RV. Carrying that over to a residential area, we did keep the current fourteen-day limitation on a, a stay for a residential property. Another future ordinance that we have, the Planning Commission also recommended consideration of the NFPA eleven ninety-four. That's a National Fire Protection Association set of standards for RV park design. A lot of the questions we get early on in the development is, what's the fire lane requirement? What are my parking space requirements? How far do they need to be separated, et cetera? We did find a national standard that lays all of that out with diagrams and explanations and definitions. So we'll be bringing that to you in a future council meeting.
Drew, back to the, the, an RV that's parked at a residential. Can they be on the street or do they have to be off-street?
It would have to be off-street.
Off-street, okay.
For the adoption of, of the second regulations, NFPA, could we go ahead and wait to approve that once we approve the regulations themselves? Because what if council doesn't end up approving that then?
Yeah, sorry. This ordinance does not include the NFPA eleven ninety-four. It was just coming out of. It was just coming out of the recommendation from the Planning Commission, recommended consideration. That would be a fire code change, which would be a separate chapter.
Right, that's what I was, I had to ask too.
Sorry, just, just a reference here. It's not a, not, not anything you're approving today. And finally, the land use table, we did not include medical office in the public and institutional. We only include the general and professional offices, so wanted to add that to the land use table. With that, be pleased to answer any questions.
I just want to say, whoever designed the agenda for tonight really did a good job, but after three hours, we'd have something exciting and fun, like going through the city's zoning code.
This is like when you go on vacation, you come back to work.
All right, okay. Let me say, for the hospital folks, you've been here a long time. I want to give you an excused absence. Do we have another matter?
Yes.
Eight A. Oh, I wonder why you were waiting. Okay, I, I, I know now, I know. All right, okay.
As you said, it's a limited content.
I will move.
Wait, wait a second. Do we have any, do we have any speakers to this?
Yes.
Eight fifty-four, public hearing, okay.
Ms. Francina?
We have George Buridi.
Sorry, this is the last time I'm gonna talk and then I'm gonna leave you all to yourselves. So, George Buridi sixteen sixteen Glen Road. So, real quickly, the little high points on section five, talking about the property use, joining properties. Mr. Paxton mentioned something about rezoning, but if you remove all this, it appears that you're allowing for zoning bleed. And I'm not really sure that was the goal, but my suggestion would be to just keep the first part, which is what originally was there, which was no person shall use property located in one zoning district to provide parking for or access to a use located on property located in another zoning district. And get rid of all the unless part, because that was added without direction from council. I'm not even really sure why it was there. But, that prevents the zoning bleed that I'm talking about. Section ten, talking about the travel, travel trailer use, I'm not really sure if this is intentional or not, but the, I guess it's section C, then capital B, it says, a travel trailer may be parked in residential but shall only be occupied by one or more people who do not claim the, and now is, trailer as their permanent residence. As an example, before this change, currently grandparents who permanently live in an RV can visit their kids and grandkids and reside in the RV during their visit as long as the visit is less than fourteen days. This change effectively removes this as a compliant use, which would appear to be a mistake of implementation that, that could be corrected just by putting it back to say, not claim the dwelling unit as their permanent residence. And then, section eleven, the use of shipping containers as storage building. It says, is required to be screened in accordance with this code and/or matched to the color of the nearest building. As Mr. Paxton alluded to, I'm not really sure you're, the same law that prevents you from defining building materials also prevents you from defining an aesthetic method in construction or renovation. So, I'm not really sure you can actually require a certain color. But, you might want to look into that as well. And then, section fifteen, said, talks about granting the city manager the authority to change the zoning map without bringing back to council for final approval. And a public hearing would seem to be a little problematic, an amendment that would be lacking in transparency to the public. I, I would urge you to just have them make the changes and bring them back to you for review and approval. That's all, thanks.
Thank you.
Do we have any other speakers? Okay, we have a public hearing at eight fifty-seven. Comments, questions, council?
I guess we can get a, a response from staff on the ones that he brought up. The first one, I think is, was a good catch on page four, section five, to keep in the part that says that no person shall use a property located in one zoning district to provide parking for access to a, a property located in another district. I think that's a good catch to keep that in, because if we take it out, I guess it's up for question of whether we can actually do that or not.
Well, no, I mean, if they're using the property incorrectly in terms of the zoning code, we could decide them irrespective of whether this is in there or not. I think, I don't, I don't remember if we physically.
I don't think we looked at that. So, if you had a commercial property and someone wanted to build their parking lot on a residential lot behind it, that parking lot would not be allowed and a use, is not a use permitted in that residential zoning district.
Right.
That's not a change, is it?
No. I think what Mr. Rudy was asking was the unless portion gave some exemptions from that.
Oh.
The first statement does clearly state you cannot do it if it's in another district. I think some of the, I, I understand his point, but the land use table would not allow it.
Unless, unless, unless.
Well, in fact.
I don't, I.
Of course, if, if you add, if, I mean, you could have something like this, but it's, you know, again, I think it's clear if you're using a piece of property for, for a use that's not allowed in that zoning district, then, you know, we can cite you for it. If you, if you have this back in, then it seems to limit it just to parking or access, and then maybe other uses are allowed. So, I would argue leaving this in, in fact, would confuse the issue.
And wasn't there some confusion associated with that issue?
Associated with the exemptions from that overlap. So, the zoning would not allow that overlap by removing this section, I guess what I'm trying to say, unless we include and other uses and.
Well, it, it says or to access, it, I mean, wouldn't that, I mean, doesn't that cover it? It's not only parking.
Well, what I'm saying is, if, if you leave this in, then, as it's written, then you, you may have a disagreement about whether other uses other than parking and access are, are allowed. And so, if, if you want to leave this in, then I would say, no person shall use property located, you know, something more blanket for any use that's not authorized in that district. And we already, we already have that. You know, we, we, in fact, we, you know, presumably have code enforcement go remind people, hey, you're using your property for a use that's not, you know, zoned for that.
It's already covered.
Right.
Other questions?
Um, yeah. What was the other one he said?
Travel trailer, page seven.
Right. On page seven. So, really, going to his point, it would read, a travel trailer or recreational vehicle may be parked within a residential district, but shall be, but shall only be, and then go to B, but shall only be occupied by one or more people who do not claim the dwelling unit as their permanent residence.
Right, that is correct.
That's right.
So, should we change that?
Yes.
Okay.
And so, what that does, if I have a, if I'm claiming an address as my permanent residence, but I'm actually living in the RV, this would prohibit that, yes.
Okay, so, we're making a change.
We are making a change to that.
Bring that back.
We put red in, take blue out.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
So, we'll keep dwelling unit, take out trailer, okay. And then, page eight, I, I was gonna bring that up because I think it was mentioned that we can't regulate the materials that's used and I tried to do a little bit of research on that, but requiring that the color matched the nearest building to it, I'm not sure we can, we can do that similar to, we can't regulate the materials of someone painting whatever color of their house.
Won't we do it if it's a conditional use?
I, is, you know, that, that law is, been out, I guess, well, three years now. I didn't find anything that prevented that, but I'll, we'll, we'll go back and look at that again. But, but clearly, we, we don't want, I, I think the, the, the the goal here is to have, you're gonna have a shipping container, don't have it, it just, you know, screaming out there, kind of melt, melt it into the property.
If we look at it, I know that some of that law's been reviewed since it's been passed.
But, we'll, we'll look at that again.
What's a building material versus just a color.
Color scheme.
We can look at that.
Any speakers? Go out of public hearing at now at three. Okay, is there a motion on this, including the change that we've just talked about?
I will move that we approve ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash oh two on first reading, with the exception, or with the change on page seven, adding back in dwelling unit and removing trailer or vehicle.
Okay. All right, is a motion, we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second. Hold it favorably, it'll be known by the raised hands and passes unanimously.
Yeah, just staff, you don't mind just coming back to the second reading and see whether yes or no we can?
Right.
Thank you.
All right, let's go to seven A, Ms. McLehannon.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash zero one, second reading. An ordinance admitting chapter seventy-four of the Code of Ordinances, City of Kerrville, Texas, titled Parks and Recreation, by adding a new Article Three Parkland Dedication to include Parkland Dedication requirements for new residential development within the city and its extraterritorial jurisdiction, providing an effective date and providing other matters relating to the subject. And there are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right, this is a, a second reading, and so there's no staff presentation unless Mr. Paxton, you're gonna speak to some changes?
Just to, just to answer any questions. We did have some clarifications from our previous, there's some question about the fees. So, let me get that real quick. So, the current fees are charged based on ordinance ninety-one ten. That's what you see in the center of your screen. So, with the current fee schedule that was adopted, in anticipation of this ordinance coming, we did adopt a, an increase in that fee. However, because the ordinance ninety-one still controls, those fees have not been increased, they're just in the fee schedule.
Right.
So, the adoption of this ordinance will make the fee schedule active at that's, that smaller increase. And with the recommendation out of the Parks Board, staff will bring back a future proposed rate.
This is future, what you're showing us right now?
That's correct.
We're not moving that tonight.
Yeah, that is not part of the action tonight. But, tonight's action will go from the ninety-one ten ordinance to the fiscal year twenty-two fee schedule in the budget. And then, again, any fee adjustment or budget amendment, we may look at that further proposal that steps it up more akin to our current market rates.
All right, okay, council, questions on this one? Do we have anybody standing up to speak?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, is, what is your motion on seven A?
I move that we approve ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash oh one on second reading.
All right, go ahead, hear the second.
Second.
Okay, motion second, hold it favor, raise hands. Okay. All right, eight A.
Economic Development Grant Agreement between Sid Peterson Memorial Hospital, Inc. and the City of Kerrville, Texas Economic Improvement Corporation for infrastructure necessary to promote or develop new or expanded business enterprises that create primary jobs. We do have three representatives from the hospital and we do have two citizen speakers signed up.
Okay.
Mayor, we're giving Mr. Paxton the rest of the night off, so he can go ahead and go home if he wants to. Stand Yeoman's work for the last three hours, so, and his voice held out, so.
You're good.
This economic development application came before, was submitted to the EIC in the fall timeframe. They did review it across two subsequent meetings in November and then a public hearing that was held in December. Essentially, as you saw earlier today, with the annexation that's occurring, the Peterson Health Entity is expanding their campus. And part of that is bringing in the new ambulatory surgery center. They're already, the community, not only Kerrville, but Kirk County's largest employer with over twelve hundred employees and many more as part of their greater medical ecosystem. But, that surgery center presents a, a unique possibility, as you mentioned earlier, Councilman Eichner, to really allow for Kerrville to become a surgery destination and a medical destination, not only within our region, as we already are, but really across the state and even from out of state and out of country with the type of talent that they are looking to be able to bring in. However, as we mentioned you earlier, Mayor, that surgery center is going on a parking lot. And so, they are looking at having to expand into the south portion of their campus. And part of that includes an extensive amount of public infrastructure now that they will be within the city limits. And so, they became before the EIC to ask if there was a possibility of the EIC helping them with the cost for that public infrastructure. They're looking at several million dollars of additional infrastructure that is really private infrastructure. The public infrastructure was over one point six million, and so they did make an application for that. Again, that does not include private parking lot, that is public infrastructure, including roadways, water, some drainage issues, regional drainage issues, sewer services, et cetera. So, EIC unanimously approved that application in December timeframe, and that does come before you tonight for your approval. Be happy to answer any questions you may have. As Ms. McLehannon mentioned, you do have the applicant here to answer any questions as well.
Just one clarification, in the summary statement, it references to Sid Peterson Memorial Hospital. Is that the legal name?
That is the legal name, yes, sir.
Okay, okay, all right, yeah.
We always try to make sure you're legal.
Yeah, right, right.
Or Mr. Hayes does anyway.
Thank you for that. All right, council, comments or observations?
Good deal, wonderful deal. Excited to see what's happening. And I would like, can I go ahead and make an amendment, a, a motion?
Yeah, yeah, any other discussion? Oh, we got.
Oh, we have speakers?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Peggy McKay.
Is she not gonna speak also? Okay, great. Okay, all right, okay.
Peggy McKay.
Peggy McKay, Westchester, Kerrville. In section four point three, it says Peterson will attempt to meet the standards for dark skies much as practical. Are there any plans to include the representatives of our local dark sky community to work with the hospital? If there's any questionable or problems that don't seem to be solvable, would the dark sky people be included in anything that would be helpful? And then, it also, and the one that's close to my heart is the trees. I don't think we ever got a tree ordinance established. And this says that they will preserve the eighteen-inch-plus healthy native trees, which is a good thing, until you read further and it says, unless removal is necessary. Who determines what's necessary and why would we cut down these big trees? It's hot here and it, I just, I just don't understand why the teeth were removed from the statement of we'll preserve the native trees.
Can anybody speak to that?
Mayor, I could speak to that. We, we did pull this from, actually, the ordinances that were previously, or in zoning cases that were previously moved forward for a project that was in the area. Again, you recall, the community has not moved forward with specific regulations or guidelines in regards to dark skies or tree preservation. It is one of the items, it is on the council's, you know, near-term list for review, but it is not an item that has been approved by the community. Thus, we went back to regulations that had been passed previously per some zoning cases that had occurred in that area. Actually, they're at the corner of Lehman and sixteen, and so we pulled those over as a way, again, we've talked about, you know, when this carrot and stick approach, certainly, this was a carrot approach, and so, and the applicant was amenable to continuing to, to, you know, they want to be good, good neighbors and, and good members of the community.
Mr. Feasor, are y'all follow, are y'all far enough in your plans to have any answers to, to those questions as far as what you're planning to do?
So, we don't have official plans that have been approved yet, but we would be more than happy to work with dark skies folks and if they've got recommendations, definitely consider those. As far as the trees, we have no plans to go in there and just start removing trees. I think as far as the as necessary portion would be, if there are trees of, of that size or greater. if there are trees of that size or greater, that would be in the way of where that road would be or where the parking lot is going to be. That may require removal of those trees in order to be able to put the parking lot or the road in that, in that spot.
Well, we, will the public be aware of that before it happens? Or will they be gone? The Highway sixteen and Lehman Drive.
If you go to the mic, okay.
The Highway sixteen and Lehman Drive property, yeah, they did cooperate on the big trees, but that was after a number of the larger trees were already removed. And so, I would hate to see us go into that type. I don't expect it. I don't expect that to happen. But if there could just be some consideration of reconfiguring the design that would save some of these trees, they're just important to us, and we're just tearing them down.
Yeah. Well, you're singing my song on dark skies and trees. And right now, we have little, little we can do about somebody just coming in and taking trees out. But I'm hearing, I'm hearing Peterson Health to say, that's something we'll take seriously. We'll look at it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Okay, any other questions or comments?
Bruce Stricki.
Oh, okay.
We've got two speakers.
It'll be Bruce and then, and then, and then Rudy?
Only, only Bruce Stricki is.
Oh, okay, okay.
Bruce Stricki, six fifteen Earl Garrett Street. I commend the comments about trees and dark skies, but those are not ordinances we currently have on our books. And I'd love to work on that with Peggy in the future. What I would like to point out is that for over sixty years, Peterson Health as Sid Peterson Memorial Hospital has been a beacon in our community, leading us to good health and good lives and leading the healthcare community throughout the nation as a rural hospital that is independent. And anything we can do as a community to support this hospital and continue it in its mission to put the community above all is something we should support. And so, I really ask you all to move forward on this from Peterson Health. It's going to be good for our community. They have started a legacy sixty years ago that they intend to keep for more than another sixty years. Thank you.
Any other, yes, Mr. Schrader.
Greg Schrader, one oh eight Castle Pines Drive in Kerrville, Texas. I am privileged to serve as chairman of the board of directors for Peterson Health, Sid Peterson Memorial Hospital. And I join the doctors, the staff, the employees, the janitors, the housekeepers, everybody associated with Peterson Health in serving the people of Kerrville, Kirk County, and the Hill Country. That's our mission. And it's gratifying to think that the council and the EIC would join us in that mission. And as a taxpayer, I can't think of a better way to get some economic impact than in helping us assist with this project. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
All right, we're out of the public hearing at nine sixteen, and.
Can I now move?
Yeah, hold on just a second. Let me see something here. You know, that one wasn't a public hearing, was it?
Yes, sir.
But did you notice I gavelled in and gavelled out?
Yes, sir.
Okay, please, all right. I just want to say that, you know, as a pastor here and having served on the foundation board of the hospital and served part-time for, in twenty twenty at the hospital, this is a huge asset to us for so many reasons. And so, I'm looking forward to be partnering with you on this. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I approve, I move that we approve the Economic Development Grant Agreement between Sid Peterson Memorial Hospital and the City of Kerrville, Texas Economic Improvement Corporation.
All right, we have a second?
Second.
Here we go, a motion second, all in favor, give a raised right hand. And it passes unanimously. Now, you may be excused.
Thank you.
Sure, sure, all right. Okay, board appointments, nine A.
Appointment of chair and vice chair for the tax incrementally investment zone, Ters, board of directors.
Mayor, can I make a motion?
Yes.
Can I move that we appoint, reappoint Kenneth Early as chair and Mindy Windley as vice chair?
I second that.
Okay, all right. Got a motion to reappoint chair and vice chair. Would you say it, state it again, the names?
Yes, the names for reappointment are for the chair to be Kenneth Early and the vice chair to be Mindy Windley.
Okay, Kenneth Early, Mindy Windley, all right. Questions or comments?
No, I'll just say I spoke with all the board members, except one, he didn't, he wasn't able to speak. But they're all in support of the reappointment. I wanted to reach out to them because they're going to be working with each other and the leadership of their board, and so they're all in support of this.
Good, good, okay, all right. All right, so, we got a motion, we have a second?
Yes, I second.
You second, okay. All in favor, upraised hands, okay, thank you. All right, now, any future agendas?
I have two. One, I was just curious on the mayor's Public Health Task Force. A lot of community members spent a lot of time and effort putting in to giving a recommendation to council, and we had a report from them. So, I was just wondering what the status of that was and if we're going to have another thing coming back to us.
Yes, we are, and that, that is ongoing, a little bit interrupted by the holiday season.
Sure.
But there is a potential very good grant to help us get started in partnering with a local nonprofit to create that center that people can call and get the information about where they can be helped. And the possibility of two navigators to work with folks that have reached out for, for help. And we looked, we just looked at a proposal this week from that nonprofit in terms of costs, but we're moving along.
Okay. My second one was regarding the election for city council. The city posted notices that we're going to have the election in May on the seventh and that we're going to be accepting applications starting next week. On Monday, on the eighteenth, I'm sorry, I think that's a Tuesday, I don't know. But we're going to be accepting, I'm sorry, not on Monday. Yeah.
Wednesday, the nineteenth.
Wednesday, the nineteenth, thank you. And so, I was going to say that we're not going to be, the resolution to order the election isn't on our agenda until our next meeting on the twenty-fifth. And to me, I was a little bit confused of how we could put a notice out that we have an election in May and how we can be handing out applications and then accepting them for an election that hasn't yet been, hasn't yet been ordered. And so, I was going to suggest if we could have, I don't know, I don't understand how we can do that and if anybody approved that or how we're moving forward on that. But if we should call a special ele, a special election, a special meeting next week on Monday or Tuesday in the morning to order an election, that way, we can be getting, accepting applications on Wednesday.
I'd like to ask Mr. Hayes to comment on that.
Well, I, I think, you know, obviously, we're going to, as in years past and as we're required to do under our charter and state law, we're going to hold an election in May. And that resolution that sets out the election will come before you at the next meeting. I don't think that there's any, certainly any sort of legal issue involved with the way we're doing the process. So, at the next meeting, I think there'll be both a resolution and then an agreement with the county, for the county to provide the services to hold the election.
Okay, so you think we're good?
Do we follow the Secretary of State of Texas election calendar? And I believe it's February eighteen.
You have to be.
Okay.
All right, okay. I would like for us to consider a future.
February eighteenth is the statutory last day for ordering the election by Secretary of State of Texas.
Okay, so we can be getting, accepting applications by saying.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, on a future agenda, I would like for us to consider tree preservation, existing ordinance and what our options are. Okay.
Would you like a, would you like a second to that?
Yeah, yeah, that's.
I'll second that.
Okay, good. Do we have a, all in favor of that motion, if you'd raise a hand? Okay, it's unanimous, thank you. All right, it is nine twenty-three. Would anybody like an executive session?
Oh, please, Mayor.
Mr. Hayes, do you have anything?
Tell me if you want a bottle of water poured over your head.
Mr. Hoppy, anything? Yeah, okay, all right, we are adjourned.